Let's call ourselves to order, we can get on with this. Okay, it being 7:30, we call the meeting of the Situate Planning Board for Thursday, May 23rd, 2013, in session. I need a motion on the agenda.
All moved.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First item on the agenda is the continuation of a public hearing, flexible open space, special permit, definitive subdivision plan for 305 Country Way. We call that we had to sit the agenda previous, we opened up and we immediately closed because we're not ready to proceed. We are farther down the line, and we are going to proceed even though we've not got a final product. Having said that, let me turn it over to Greg, it's to you and your team, and tell us what you're looking to do.
Great. For the record, my name's Greg Morse, I'm a registered engineer, Morse engineering. With us, we have Doug Sheeran, who's property owner and applicant, and his attorney, Michael Hayes. I'm prepared to talk about the subdivision project. We weren't sure if you wanted to first talk about the letter that this board issued to the applicant, he ceased construction work with the project.
I'd like, why don't you go ahead and talk about your project, and we can talk about that at the end.
Okay.
That work.
Sure. So this project is a flexible open space development. Some of you were here, some of you weren't, but I came before this board earlier, sorry, I guess at the end of 2012, which was in the fall. My client purchased this property, 305 Country Way. We met with the board on a preliminary basis, a pre-application. We set then, we've gone out, we performed full survey of the property, we performed soil testing, all witnessed by the Board of Health. We've gone to the Conservation Commission, we've had our wetland lines confirmed through an ORED process, and we've developed the plans that I'm gonna present to you tonight. I understand we've gotten some review comments today from the DPW, and we just received some from the towns consultant, John Chiesia, at the end of last week. I can address some of the concerns in those, but I will be submitting a revised set of plans to discuss at our next meeting that will fully address all of the comments.
I think if it works for you, let's keep those comments out, and we can address them separately, we address them all at once, rather than have part now and part in subsequent years.
Yeah, I'll address all of them directly through a letter. So, this here, I'll start with the existing conditions out at the site. This plan here represents the property line in bold. You see Country Way at the top right corner. Country Way is a public roadway, it's also a scenic roadway in the town of Situate. The property in itself comprises of eight and a half acres. 4.25 acres of that is upland area. The site's improved, it has a single-family house located right here. It's located in a couple of different zoning districts. Through the existing house is the zoning district line between the R20 district, which is along Country Way, and then the R40, the R1 district, which is the rear of the property. The entire property is in the Water Resource Protection District, and then a small portion of the rear corner of the property is within the Situate Floodplain and Watershed Protection District. The wetlands lines and the natural features that we've outlined here on this plan include, as shown in blue, this is the bordering vegetated wetland that was approved through the ORED in Situate Conservation. Conservation has jurisdiction within 100 feet of that blue line. That is this green line, that's the 100-foot wetland buffer zone to the wetland. Running within the wetland, from north to south, we have an intermittent stream. The intermittent stream starts right here, and it runs through the wetland in a southerly direction. Ultimately, this all discharges into the town reservoir, which is off Locust, down at the bottom of the page. Feeding this wetland, there was determined to be a non-jurisdictional drainage ditch. This conveys drainage water from a catch basin located on Country Way that discharges to upland area, and it traverses the property. DS1 through DS8 mark the limit of that drainage ditch. Conservation determined that it was not an intermittent stream. It is not located within an easement, it's not jurisdictional or protected under the Wetlands Protection Act or the Situate Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Off of that stream, we have two resources that are protected. We have shown in yellow, a 150-foot no disturbance zone per the bylaw. Because that stream and that drainage ditch are classified as a tributary to the water supply, local bylaws require a 150-foot no disturbance zone, again, that's shown in yellow. Yet furthermore, Title V for septic purposes establishes a 200-foot setback from that drainage ditch and from that stream. That 200-foot setback is called a Zone A, which is shown in pink. No septic systems can be located in a Zone A. Again, Conservation has reviewed this and approved these lines as you see them before the board tonight. The first step in applying for a flexible open space development is for the applicant to produce a buy right plan that shows the conventional yield, if you respected current zoning, which again is the R2 and the R1 zoning district through the site. This plan depicts a conventional density plan, three lots on this property. Each of the lots has the requisite 100 feet of frontage. Lot 1 and Lot 3 both exceed the 100 feet. Lot 2, where it's on a cul-de-sac, is allowed 60 feet of frontage, and it has that. All of the lots, because there are portions in the R1 zoning district, all of the lots have a minimum of 40,000 square feet, all upland. Lot 3 is 54,000 square feet, Lot 2 is 47,000 square feet, Lot 1 has 66,000 square feet off upland area. The other requirement we look at is lot width. In the R1 zoning district, the lots need 175 feet of width through the entire dwelling, measured parallel to the frontage. We have that width, that width is depicted on the plans through the dwellings, and complies. Each of these lots has had perk tests on them, witnessed by the Board of Health, and I might add, there's a memorandum in the file from the Board of Health endorsing this After development of the conventional density plan, the next step is to come up with the plan for the flexible open space development, which is what we've prepared here. And this plan here, with the flexible open space development by law, allows us to do it, allows the applicant to reduce or be exempt from lot area frontage and lot width requirements of the zoning district. So, we have three lots with a reduced-sized roadway. Each of these lots, two larger lots, Lots 2 and 3 are just under three-quarters. So, we're talking 14,000 square feet for Lot 1, and then Lots 2 and 3 are right around 31,000 square feet of size. Lot 2 has 20 feet of frontage to access through a driveway. Lots 1 and 3 both have in excess of 100 feet for their driveways. The purpose of the bylaw was to preserve natural and cultural resources and promote open space. We feel that this plan does that because what we're proposing is significant open space here. What you see in green represents the open space that will ultimately be deeded over to the town. That open space, the minimum requirement for a project like this is two and a half acres per the bylaw. We're proposing 6.1 acres of open space with this plan. We're also preserving the entire 100-foot wetland buffer zone. This project will not need to go back to Conservation because we are entirely outside of their 100-foot buffer zone with all of our proposed work. Typically, the commission allows work up to 50 feet. This is our grading plan for the site. What we've tried to do in laying out the site, you'll see that we have the three homes shown, they all access over the new roadway that we're proposing. We are asking for a number of waivers, we have put it in this table, further adding to that list some waiver requirements. But, what we were hoping for, is that with this project, we're trying to maintain the natural drainage pattern. Right now, all of the drainage for this site, Country Way is the high point, everything drains back to that wetland. We're maintaining that drainage path. Everything here will flow down and is collected within the roadway through a catch basin, runs through an infiltration basin, and then ultimately discharges to the buffer zone. So, we're not changing the discharge points, we're not directing water to any new areas, we're maintaining the drainage pattern. We've submitted a full set of stormwater calculations, your review engineer has looked at. I understand he has questions on a couple of things, and I will provide him with some additional documentation that he needs for that. The lots, they'll all be connected to municipal water supply, they'll all be serviced by onsite individual septic systems, they all have their own individual driveways. I've been trying to meet with DPW, we've rescheduled another meeting to talk with Jimmy DeBarros at the Water Department. We will ultimately be looping the water line up and down the street. We've looked at adjacent, none of the adjacent properties have municipal water for us to loop through the project onto an adjacent property. In the nearest connecting street, Williamsburg Lane, you know, is 400 feet away through two separate private properties in a wetland area. I don't think it'll be suitable to connect to that, but what we'll be proposing is coming down and looping back out within our own project here. Fire hydrants, I need to set up a meeting with the fire department. We are proposing a fire hydrant on our site, down here in the cul-de-sac of this location. There's also a second hydrant, right at the corner of our project, right at the intersection of Country Way and our proposed roadway. We feel that this project, if granted some of the waivers on the construction of the roadway, and the roadway waiver we're asking for is the reduction in the pavement width, where we're asking for the elimination for granite curbing, and we're asking for a reduced pavement section. And the reason why we're really asking for all these is to reduce the impervious runoff from this site. If we're reducing the impervious surface area, we can reduce the runoff. Where within the Water Resource Protection District, we feel that by doing that, that's gonna be a benefit to the town. And what we've proposed is, we've proposed a road that's 16 feet wide, has 12-inch tape caught berms on either side, and has three and a half inches thickness of pavement. And the way we came up with asking for these waivers is, we looked at the zoning bylaw, which allows common driveways for up to three houses. And these are the exact requirements that the zoning bylaw requires for accesses on driveways up to three houses. They require a 16-foot wide driveway, 16-foot wide roadway, they require the 1-foot tape caught berms, and they require the three and a half inches of pavement. So, we've mimicked what the zoning bylaw defines really as adequate access to projects of three houses. The other, the other boards, we have a letter from John Clarkson, the Water Resource Committee. Again, I think John was asking about the 150-foot setback from our tributary area. Again, I'm telling you that we comply with that, as shown on these plans, we're not proposing any work within that. Our roadway is entirely outside of it, and the gradient for that will be outside of that. The Traffic Rules Committee has expressed three concerns. They had a question regarding the intersection with Country Way in our proposed project, they made a statement that it did not comply. And, I don't understand why that is, I've tried to contact them. We've provided an intersection based on your regulations, that is, between 90 and 60 degrees to Country Way, we are intersecting perpendicular, so we're in agreement with that, and we're directly opposite of an intersection, exactly how your rules and regulations say, or say to locate a site like this. The other ones, they had a question regarding the roadway width, mentioning that it did not comply with the 24-foot wide pavement section, and that's one of the waivers we're asking for. And then, the last comment was site distance. And I agree, site distance, if you have been to the site, we're using essentially the existing driveway opening that services the house. Site distance to the south or to the east along Country Way is limited. We've looked at the speeds on Country Way, and we've looked at the ASHTO requirements, and we will be preparing a site triangle to show that we have adequate site distance. That site distance will require some cutting of vegetation along Country Way, some of it within the right-of-way, and some of it on Lot 1. I've mentioned to Laura, we're gonna submit a separate scenic roadway permit for that, to do that cutting. And then what we will do is, we'll add an easement, a site distance easement over a front strip of Lot 1 to prevent any landscaping or placement of any structures there that would, you know, encroach on that site distance. So, we do understand that as a concern, and I think that we can, we can remedy that. The other comments in John's letter and the DPW's letter, I'll be addressing after this meeting, once I've had a chance to fully analyze them and prepare additional information. So, I guess, any further questions, or if we wanna talk about some of the waivers or any additional concerns? Thank you.
Let's, before we go back and then let's look at the tributary again, so let's address that, so we make sure that we've got that covered. Because that seems to be initially, that was the thrust of it. So, why don't you talk a little bit more to that?
Sure. So, the whole project here, when I filed with the Conservation Commission, we went out to the site. I had a wetland scientist, professional wetland scientist, Brad Holmes, flag the wetlands on this site. And when he did so, he flagged a bordering vegetated wetland in blue, and he flagged an intermittent stream, shown here in orange, terminating at this point. This was not determined to be a wetland at that point, okay? And we filed with the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission hired their own consultant to go out and review the wetland lines and review the status of these. They hired Steve Ives, who again is a wetland scientist, very reputable out of Norwell, he's on the Water Commission in Norwell. Steve Ives went out, and he reviewed the wetland line, they made a couple of minor modifications. You'll see, you know, flags A23 through A12 moved, pretty much all less than 10 feet, but a couple of flags moved in this location, standard procedure. He also told us that the limit of the tributary terminated at this flag. The definition of a tributary per the state is that it's where the stream ceases to have a, and I quote, "clearly defined channel in the ground." And so, if you walk from the back of this site forward, there's a clear channel in the ground, but when you get to this location, that channel ceases to exist, it becomes overland flow through a kind of a boulder area, a wetland area, but that channel ceases to exist. So, the Conservation Commission consultant requested that we change our Zone A line based on that documented condition out in the field. We changed our Zone A line on this plan accordingly. There was a little bit of correspondence from some of Butters regarding the project, there was some correspondence from other people in town, and we decided, we need to get the DEP out here to look at this. The DEP came out, and the DEP said, what we need to use is the mapped location as shown on the DEP website. The mapped location showed a Zone A line cutting up through this property, okay? Not quite where it's shown in the pink line, but it was, it was about 20 feet further kicked to the north, 20 feet, okay? And so, we added that, and that's the, that's the location that Conservation Commission approved, was the line that was as mapped per the DEP website. In further discussion this spring, after the Conservation Commission had approved that line, in talking with them, it became, not that we should use the mapped location per the DEP website, but we should use an offset from the drainage channel of 200 feet to establish that Zone A. And so, this set of plans here, the previous set that I submitted as our first formal submittal, was what was approved by the Conservation Commission. This set that I've revised shows the, shows the line in accordance with the most recent correspondence with DEP, okay? So, this shows the most conservative approach to determine that Zone A line. That Zone A, again, is measured 200 feet out from the tributary. This shows the most conservative approach in doing that. Again, I realize there has been a lot of correspondence about this tributary status, some of it from the neighbors is right, and some of it is wrong. You know, there's a letter from Lance Van Lenton, who's a resident in town, specifically saying that this drainage channel is an intermittent stream. That clearly is not scientifically based. The Conservation Commission and their consultant determined that it was not an intermittent stream. It is clearly that. A man-made, non-jurisdictional drainage. I think what Lance was trying to get at is, that's the location we have to measure our 200 feet from. He used the wrong language in determining that, but, again, we are respecting all of the setbacks through that drainage channel.
The tributary was definitely one of the, one of the main issues that came up early on in this, in this development, and I feel pretty comfortable with the way the buffers have been redrawn on the plan. The location is, I think, the same one that the DEP hydrogeologists agreed to in the field. There was a site visit with some neighbors, some Conservation Commission members, Greg Morse was there, I'm sure Doug Sheeran was there, and this was back in January. So, I think we've kind of gotten to a good place with that tributary and all the boundaries. The only things I wanna say in connection with a tributary, and these are just, you know, my, my recommendations, the convention, the flexible development plan that is in front of the board now, shows quite a bit of land area, I think it's on Lot, it's on Lot 3, within the 150-foot buffer, and none of that land can be touched under zoning. So, it's, it's always hard for us in the office when people come in and they say, "I've got this land, I wanna do this and so," you know, "How come I can't do it?" I can see where there may be, you know, some marketability issues or what have you, but I think that some consideration should be given to getting as much land as possible within that 150-foot area, part of the protected open space, and not on somebody's individual lot. The other thing that came up in connection with a tributary was, there has been a bit of site work going on, which, you know, I told the planning board about, and, you know, the result was the letter that was sent out, whether or not that was, you know, on target or not, I think, you know, maybe we're gonna get to later. But, one of the things that we had been asking for is to have that 150-foot line staked. And I drove by, I, I didn't do a whole big investigation, but from the car anyway, I couldn't, you know, in the driveway, I couldn't see any stakes out there yet. So, okay. So, I don't know if you wanna just comment on where you are with a, with a staking?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, you, you can see on, on this plan here, the area that Laura's talking about, this is the 150-foot no disturbance zone, and you'll note that the existing house is within that zone, the existing barn is in that zone. In this plan here, you'll also notice that this isn't proposed one, that's all existing disturbed area, that's all existing lawn surface associated with 305 Country Way. So, the applicant had filed for a demolition permit and was issued one for the barn, and took down that barn. That barn brought in fill, they filled in the foundation for that barn, there's been some additional fill brought in, they plan to take down the house, the permit has been requested for that as well. So, before doing that work, the client, you know, has, I don't know if it was before, but the client has installed an erosion control barrier at his limit of work, and essentially, that limit of work, it is inside that 150-foot buffer zone, simply because you need access to the barn that's inside there, you need access to the house which is inside there. We're not doing excavation or altering the land pattern in there, but it's simply to get access around the house and to fill in the portions of the foundation that were there. So, that's, that's the work that's been done. Now, I did stop by the site yesterday, we did not stake the 150-foot buffer zone yesterday, but what we did do is, I measured with Doug, the applicant, we measured out from the wetland line 150 feet to where his erosion control had been placed. And where it did not meet the 150-foot setback, we specifically rolled it back so that it would meet that setback. So, we were out there with a tape measuring that. There are portions still of the erosion control up here, adjacent to the existing house, again, because the house is inside the 150, the erosion control is inside that 150 too. But, the erosion control, it provides only, only the width necessary between the house and the erosion control to get construction equipment around the house so that that house can be demolished in the future.
Okay, we're getting back to just a couple more comments. As far as the old house there, I talked to Doug Smith, who's the chairman of the Situate Historic Commission, and even he is not really sure what the age of that house is. He wasn't too confident in the, the report that the state did, which I sent around to everybody, which, you know, was a lot of interesting little facts in it, but he's not sure about whether that house is from 1700 or what the date is. One thing that he had asked for, which, you know, maybe the board wants to explore, is whether someone from the Historic Commission could document the house, whether they could take pictures of it, you know, that sort of thing, maybe, you know, draw it to scale, something like that, before it's demolished, just to have some kind of record of what was there that's a little bit more than, you know, I think there's one picture that Mass Historic has, there's probably one picture that the assessors have, you know, just to have, you know, a little better understanding of what was there, even, you know, after it's gone, just for sort of historical purposes. The road construction, the memo from the DPW does evaluate some of the waivers in terms of not recommending that the pavement construction standard be waived. I can understand the, the argument that the common driveway standards are less stringent, but, you know, I mean, I, I don't know how you evaluate, this is really not exactly a common driveway. With a common driveway, all the lots have frontage on an existing road, so they could, you know, each have their own driveways if they had to. That's really the only reason I can think of, to have a stricter standard for it, for this road as a subdivision road. Maybe that's not, you know, not really enough. So, that's something to think about. If there was some type of a sidewalk on this, on this roadway, it would tie in to the new sidewalk on Country Way, which would be a nice feature to have for, you know, the people at the back. The site distance seems to be something that, that a lot of people have seen out there. John Chiesia had an issue with it, I believe the DPW also mentioned it. I know when I've gone out there, it's, it's a tricky place to pull in and back out of, and I was thinking perhaps, if there's vegetation there that's, that's small, maybe that can be taken down, you know, that doesn't require a scenic road hearing, and then, you know, Greg can look and see what the site distance actually is when you're, when you are pulling out. It's only a small subdivision, I mean, I don't think it should have the same kind of, of maybe standard as, as a larger one, but at the same time, you don't want to have an accident there. one, but at the same time, you don't want to have an accident there, you know, certainly. So that was another item on the list. And I think also the regulations really just get at the stopping site distance. And there's something else called the intersection site distance, which is the one when you're stopped in the road waiting to pull out into Country Way. That's the one that I think is the problem, and that's not in the subdivision rules and regulations. So sure, we need to, you know, to get those regulations updated, but in the meantime, you don't want to have an accident there just because the regulation doesn't have that in it. I mean, there's still transportation safety standards which, you know, which should be complied with. The looping of the water, it sounds like is something that's being addressed. The fire chief approving the hammerhead, you know, that's another thing that looks, sounds like it's being addressed. So I think we're, we seem to be moving on a pretty good path on this in some ways. The only, you know, I think one of the major concerns that I had was that so much site work was being done that it might make it more difficult later on, when the road is built, to have the road inspected and to make sure, you know, all the different, you know, the subbase and so on are all, you know, at the standard. The scheduling and the, you know, likely way that John Chiesia wants to have this kind of proceed would be that I think he'd like to meet with Greg in the near future and go, you know, once you have your plan revised, and I would probably be attending that meeting also, and go over all the changes and all of his comments. And then I think John would get a review back to the board after that, and, you know, the plan could be continued, the hearing could be continued, probably out about a month, you know, out to June 27, something like that. Sounds like it would work from, you know, our conversations with John. I think it'd be tight. I mean, it would mean everything would have to be, like, right on schedule, the way you've described your schedule, but it sounds like it could be done.
Richard?
Well, I think I agree with Laura on the fact of the roadway waiver. It seems like it would actually be a road and not a common driveway. I mean, at least as I pull in and then, like, figure out that I went the wrong direction, have to pull around. So the configuration of that whole hammerhead and the width of the road is a little bit concerning to me. And just, you know, I guess aesthetically, historically, I'm not happy about the fact that the house is being demolished. And the fact that, I know you're under really tight constraints, and I was just sitting here trying to think of any other way you could do it, but the house, the way the houses are configured, just sort of like one after the other behind each other, isn't really a good planning, it's not optimum, I think aesthetically, personally. That house in the back, you know, I don't necessarily know that, you know, I would want a house like that, but I guess that's neither here. If it meets the regulations, then it's kind of a moot point, but aesthetically, it's not the best solution, I don't think. And then I was concerned about the house at the very beginning, too, like, you know, is the back of that going to face Country Way? Because you have the driveway coming in.
No, the back is this area in here. This is the backyard. You're basically going to have a house, a corner lot house, that's going to have two frontages, one on Country Way and then the other on the access off of the new subdivision road. But I see the backyard really being, you know, behind the garage and behind this portion of the property.
Right. And I would very much advocate and want to have a condition to have the sidewalk, especially since we're using the C P A funds for the country way, so to be able to tie into that. Because when you think about it, the flexible open space is also supposed to provide other public benefits. And of course, the open space itself is a public benefit, and that's certainly good. But beyond that, there's not much else in this particular plan as far as for the public benefit. So that would be a concern for me as well. And I think Laura had a good idea about, like, if I bought Lot Number Three, and then I wanted to actually put a shed over there to the, you know, to the no disturb area, or that's a huge area that I can't really do anything for. And since I can't do anything on it anyway, it might be good to have it be part of the open space for the town. I think that does seem like a reasonable idea. So, but I don't really have any specific questions on the actual zoning itself, per se. It seems like everything's fit in where it's supposed to be. Well, I did have one question on the, I guess it was the conventional lot, or the conventional plan that was used to determine the three lots.
Yes.
On the conventional plan, like, you show, like, the septic system for Lot Number Two, and the way I was like, how would you access Lot Number Two without paving over the septic system?
You're allowed to pave over the septic systems.
So that would be, okay.
That's okay. Plus, I mean, that access handle is 60 feet in width. The septic is probably only 20 or 30. So you have another 30 feet there that you could put in a template of all the driveway to avoid the septic.
Okay. As long as that meets the regulations, I guess. I don't have any other questions.
Eric?
First of all, I am always impressed with the quality of the presentation that you provide, and this is no exception. My central focus was the roadway as well. You know, we've had ongoing discussions with other flexible open space developments in the past as to the thickness of the pavement and so forth. You know, the question always in the back of my mind, and I assume the fire department will sign off, is the idea, you know, can they get their apparatus in there and turn around? I understand that, you know, the preference that the developers have for Cape Cod berm as opposed to curbing, the excuse we hear, well, is that the snowplows will hit it and it'll break. But the reality is, it's a cost-saving issue, which is just fine. But I look forward to seeing, you know, the next permutation of your plan, and I echo the things that Richard already had to say.
I'm done.
You're done echoing?
Yeah, I'm done echoing.
Also, there's a very thirsty mosquito around here somewhere.
Oh.
Hope he goes by size.
May I respond real briefly?
Yes, you may.
Regarding the roadway construction and the waivers we're asking for, you know, I think it's imperative that the board know, maybe the board already does know, this is going to be maintained as a private roadway. It's also going to be maintained by a homeowners association that's kicking in dues to manage the road, to repave the road as necessary. It's not a public town road. So I just want to put that out there, you know, just for everyone.
Still going to require the fire department to get down it, right?
Yeah, just for the fire department.
Because you're going to have the hydrant down there, too.
Correct.
Actually, if I could just say something about that. It used to be that small subdivisions would come in, and there was some agreement that the road was always going to be private and that it was never going to be accepted by the town. It turns out, at least this is what town council has told us, that the planning board really can't prevent the residents from coming in and petitioning the road to be, you know, to be accepted by town meeting. So there's no way to really guarantee, unless it's a common driveway, when it is private forever. So.
If it does come in, it's benchmarked against subdivision standards.
Yeah.
So to the extent that they do come in and they've agreed to their own problem going into it. So.
On the roadway, it seems to me that it would be a very incremental cost to go to a full-depth pavement. I agree, probably granite curbing is redundant in this case. I actually think that I would prefer not to see a sidewalk and increase the impervious area. I can't see that you'd need it for the activity that's going to be generated by only three homes. Actually, more like only two, since the one right on Country Way will just walk out to Country Way. So that's where I stand on the road. Laura, I definitely agree with your point that an awful lot of this, I'm looking at the right plan, an awful lot of Lot Three's land is unusable by the potential homeowner, and to some degree that also applies to Lot Two. What I'm wondering is the offsets, the 150-foot no disturbance zone and the Zone A, the 200-foot offset, are those from the tributary? Is that the way the law writes?
Yeah.
And so I'm wondering if the tributary doesn't stop at the point that's designated I B 100, where there's no bank observed beyond that point. And so couldn't those, couldn't you just take a radius from that point and swing those lines right off the site?
You're right on point with what the Conservation Commission's consultant said, but the answer is no. It continues all the way up.
Okay.
Yeah, it continues as we show it.
We've kind of gone back and forth on that one.
It was a good try, though, right?
I liked the try very much.
Somebody's sacred cow hears in the middle of this.
Yeah.
Okay. That completes my comments, then.
Steve?
Well, I have a lot of similar comments, so I won't repeat them. I think, sort of, my primary comment is it seems like there were a lot of comments that came back from the various departments and from the board's plan engineer. And I'm going to withhold judgment until we see how those all get reconciled, because there's way too many of them to try to reconcile them right here. I do agree with Laura in particular about this 150-foot disturbance area, and that I think that would be a good thing to try to find a way to protect. And what I don't really understand is how you're going to do all this construction and not get into that. I mean, you're right up against it, you know, on your drawing here, and I don't know how you're going to prevent that from being disturbed while you're building that road and building that house. They're right up against it. So I'd also like to hear a little bit more about that.
Basically, what we're proposing is that, that limit of work before clearing for the roadway will be fully staked again, or will be fully staked. Right now, there's erosion control out there, but we will again stake that erosion control all the way back. The erosion control doesn't go all the way to the back of the site and across at this point, I don't think. I think it's more centralized on the front. So these points, you're right, are critical. We are clearing up to that 150-foot no disturbance on Lot Three here. Lot Two, we have a little bit more room. But Lot Two, you know, the house with this scale plan, too, it looks like it's right on top of it. It actually is probably 12 feet off of that line, based on the scale. There is a little bit of room there to get around.
Yeah, it's a lot of earth moving, and it looks like you're grading the whole site. So I just don't, particularly the road section leading up to the house.
Yeah, the road section out here, we're playing with a couple of ideas right now in response to the review engineer's comments. One of them, we're allowed to have a little bit steeper of a roadway. We may increase the profile a little bit to help drop the elevation here, just to reconcile the existing grades a little bit more. The other thought was to along that 150-foot no disturbance, to build like a stone wall, like a two-foot-high wall to act as a, almost as a retaining wall to help hold up the driveway for that lot. This lot here, how it's designed, it is a walkout. So in the front, it's matching the grades of the roadway, but out back, the existing grade is 80, and the proposed grade is 80. So that, we have a walkout basement, so it's to limit the disturbance behind that house. So I'll be providing even further detail in the next set of plans, but those are a couple of the ways we're looking at that.
Okay. Yeah, a couple of things. What's the, I guess, the difference, the height initially, or the elevation initially in the ultimate of your cul-de-sac or your hammerhead?
Sure. So right now, in the center of our hammerhead, the existing grade is 85, right here. We're bringing that location up to 88, where the catch basin is. We're cutting three feet at that location.
Is this a different drawing than we have here? I can't really tell.
No, this is, so the existing grade, I just put color to it. Existing grade is 85.
So where's the limit of the asphalt?
This.
Is it this?
This line right here.
It's this line, okay. All right.
This is a contour line.
What's this line?
This is the right-of-way, the property line, the right-of-way.
All right.
The asphalt is this double line. The double line represents the Cape Cod berm.
Okay.
Coming down the street.
I've got pretty much the same shopping list, but let's just walk through them. I was concerned about the distance from the hydrant to the third lot.
Yeah.
I don't know what's acceptable or not to the chief, but I think that that would be an issue.
Yeah, what's acceptable is the house has to be constructed within 500 feet. As it lays out right now, it's 260.
Yeah.
But the chief has not signed off on that location yet.
Yeah, because he may want to have the hydrant located. The site triangle, I think, is a good point. I would tie that into the next item on my list, and that's the Country Way path, bike path, multipath, whatever.
Yes.
I know they're engineering it, and I think that with the location of the utility poles and everything else, the construction will be done on this side of the street.
I talked with Kevin Cafferty earlier this week. He said in about a month's period, they'll have 25% design plans. I believe he, and I think Laura and I spoke about it last Friday, initially, the thoughts are that it's going to be on the opposite side of the street in this location.
That's changed his thinking, because that's where all the utilities were.
We haven't seen any plans yet, so we're both speculating, but as of earlier this week, it was opposite of this property.
Okay. Because I was just saying, I mean, you only need to clear it once.
I know.
Lot Three, I think we've, into the area, we talked to that.
Yeah.
The interesting point in a common driveway approach is opposed to, I guess I'd have to think about that. But I think the main difference is in ownership, and that I can understand, but I'd want to think about that. Buffer to the neighbors. You've got neighbors, and you've got your green spaces continued up on that.
Yeah, this.
If you give me a sense of what the distance is and what's in there now?
Sure. So right now, you know, from Country Way on down to about this location, you know, there is a buffer there that's approximately 20 feet in depth along this side, where it's been maintained as lawn this way, 20 feet buffer. We are proposing to reduce that buffer. That buffer, how we have it, is going to be 10 feet, but we're proposing that as a 10-foot no disturbance zone, okay? Down here from this location, South, for South property, has been cleared from the butter directly up to the lot line and is maintained as a stone wall. What we're proposing is, we're proposing to keep our driveway five feet, eight feet off of that lot line, and then just green lawn up to that stone wall. We're maintaining that stone wall. But we are working right up to it.
So that's your wall?
Is that your wall?
It's the boundary wall. It's right on the lot line.
And then I think, Steve, I think makes an excellent point, and when you have your construction meeting, you know, I think you're going to need to figure out how it's going to be faced and how you're actually going to do it, because you're sitting right on those buffers all the way through. Okay? Anything else on the board before we open up to the public?
No.
Comments from the public? Identify yourselves.
Yeah, I'm Bruce Lafler from 289 Country Way. Can you tell me whether, I assume these are all individual septic systems for these three houses?
Yes.
Where are they? I mean, I can see maps that show them upon it.
Sure. So Sheet Four of the plan set shows the individual septic systems, one of them being right here for Lot One. Lot Two, the septic system is to the rear of the house, right here. Or sorry, Lot Three, Lot Two in the back, again, behind the property, right here. All outside of that 200-foot Zone A location, all have perp tests by the board, help.
I'm Jay Burvison, 295 Country Way. I thought I saw on the plan, I'm concerned about the first lot, that the septic looked like it was 10 feet, and it looked really close to my property. like it was 10 feet, and I, it looked really close to my property lawn up there. I was a bit concerned about that.
Sure, so the septic systems will all need approval by the Board of Health before they're constructed. 10 feet is the minimum setback for a septic system. We are proposing a septic system at 10 feet. It complies with the requirements.
Anybody else?
Hi, Lisa Vertholz of 52, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. In terms of the, the setback requirement from the tributary, it seems like everything's under control, and that's reassuring. If it's staked out during the work plan, that's also reassuring. In terms of the density for this area, well, it is so sensitive. Is there any consideration for the number of homes being reasonable, or is that, is that something this board considers?
We could, we could make a determination of the density or not. I think, there's a reality, I think, that's, it says that three houses is not a very dense, three houses. How far back are you, you're what, almost 600 feet?
The furthest back is 400 feet, and this is on eight acres of land.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm saying eliminate portion of the land, it's sensitive, it needs careful treatment.
Oh, okay, I see your point.
So, just remove that, I'm thinking. Is it dense then?
The lots themselves would be smaller.
Right.
Which is, you could still have the same...
To me, it seems interesting that Mr. Chrisell's property, which is a matter of feet away from this, in the 1990s was only allowed one home on eight acres of land, and so close, in such a sensitive area, we're squeezing in three homes, because there's, I, I guess because of that line where the zoning changes, and I'm trying to understand it all, but I just, you know, to me, the environmental impact of these three homes goes beyond the demarcation of setback requirements. We have asphalt coming in, we have lawn fertilizer and just lifestyle effects of what's gonna happen to the land, and none of that can be used on an ongoing basis. So, for two cents worth of environmental concern, I stand for you, and just urge the board to consider the density here at such a sensitive location. And I know this is not technical, but I, I think it's a concern that should be on record at least. And I also would like to ask a question about flexible open space. My understanding of that was that there was public access to open space as a, as a result of this affluence, and I've yet to see a lot of public access. I mean, students from the eighth school used to come down to the, to the reservoir on Mr. Chrisell's property, and he's been wise enough as a landowner to put his property in trust so that he's, he'll only have one home on the avenue so that the kids can go down and look at the vernal pools and study the reservoir, see their water supply, and learn from it. I'm not asking Mr. Sharon, I understand he has living in, by building homes, but at the same time, I just think we should consider what this law is being made for. Maybe two homes is reasonable, and maybe the historic home can be salvaged somehow as a landmark, or moved elsewhere, or it just seems to change that this beautiful, pristine property is going to be nothing but big homes, and I just know that there's a lot of people that stand here with me that hope something positive for the town will come of it. I've been walking down to the reservoir every, once a week for a long time, and I can tell you, in the past month since the spring has started, the level of that reservoir has gone down by almost two feet already, and we're admitting. It's not just what we divert when we construct a building, it's the increased population of the town, and that's normal, but the density to me is another issue that that speaks to. I, I, every home requires a lot of water, and I just think, I know I've said enough, but I'm a student of the old timers of Situate, and Gordon Jenkins was one, and Bill Chrisell is another, and I think there's genuine concern for how many homes and how they're gonna be built, and how the policing of the, the, this land, it's very sensitive around it. It'll be once everyone has signed on.
Good, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great, anyone address any or all of that?
Well, I mean, this, regardless of how Mr. Sharon and myself have designed this to cluster the project and limit the disturbance here, even if we did not propose a cluster style development or an open space development, conventional zoning in the town, which was zoned, which was zoned, with this zoning allows for the construction of three homes here. We're actually giving back open space, and there are actually, you know, there's the potential for access. The open space here is not completely landlocked. It abuts Countryway, has frontage on Countryway, and it has frontage on Fred's Way. As we just, as we know, there's gonna be public access coming down Countryway. There's potential for future walkways or paths. Conventional zoning allows for three homes here. This project, the, the Situate Planning Board back in the 80s approved, I believe, three lot subdivision on this property. It was never constructed, but this has been marked as three house properties for, for a long period of time. Now, Mr. Chrisell's property, I don't know why there's one home on it, it's probably out of his care for that. Maybe he doesn't have frontage, maybe he doesn't have the ability to build a road, I don't know, but this property is defined for zoning as acceptable for three houses.
Anybody else?
Yeah, question, it does to the buffer zone that goes along that, the driveway down to those bottom two houses?
Yeah.
He said between the driveway and that wall's 10 feet?
About 12 feet.
About 12 feet. As an abut, I don't know whether I can do this, can I pick, but I can, can I request, like bushes or things to be planted? On either, either on my side of the wall, or the other side, you know, going up against this gervis in front of me this way? And I need further, you know?
I mean, that's a negotiation you can make.
Can we gently talk to you about this about those types of options?
Sure.
And that's typically the way it's done? The house, I think Laura mentioned something about access to the house, the pictures measure, that sort of thing, is that something that you guys?
I spoke to Mr. Litchfield from Historical, the information that they had with this.
Okay. Does that work?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Okay.
The house really is in not in good shape. Before I bought it, contracted Frank Snow, a number of them looked at the house to redo and passed on it.
Yeah, because I remember I talked to Frank about it.
Yeah, I've, I've been in there myself.
Aesthetically, when you look at it from the outside, you drive by, it looks, looks to be nice. So that was the question, so that, if you can just follow up with, with Doug and that'll work out?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, and then the other one was the, the letter I, that I sent in terms of additional work on being done on the site. As, as I understand it, one is that you've, you've flagged the, the setback and you're with, you're operating with, I guess, within or without, I guess, which, I'm not sure which way to always say it, but you're not, you're not into the disturbance, you're outside of that.
The reason for the excess gravel is because the house is gonna be raised, and there's a large foundation, it needs to be filled in directly, so I just had access to the gravel. It's not sift tested, it's not road gravel, and it's on top of the grass. If so, when, when the house is raised, it's usually accessible to get right into the hole and cover it up, so there's no lot opening, there's water or animals or anybody falling into it. The only reason I've got that.
So there'd be no more work done in that area?
Nothing, where the gravel is.
Sure, sure the house, sure the house coming down and then filling in the foundation?
Not until something's approved.
The 150-foot line has been marked here? And there's erosion control?
There are, there are portions in the front here, again, that are inside of that 150, only to get access around the existing house, the existing house being inside the 150.
And so was the barn, right?
So was the barn. No significant vegetation in this area has been touched as a result of having that erosion control, and this is, again, all existing lawn surface that we'll be traversing over right here around the existing house.
But, but this, on this drawing that shows the, the silt fence, that silt fence is in there right now?
Correct, that's in there.
Okay.
Thanks, David, I'm all for trudging, which is, have I put some up? My neighbor to the north. I'm all for privacy, and I understand that you don't want to see this go up. Also, my daughter's moving to the back lot. The whole reason I bought this property, because she won't move back to Situate. I'm a builder, but I also have a company boss that I work with, too. But I'm all about, I can leave it with a new shrug of neighbors.
It is...
I, I understand.
The traffic's gonna be a little issue.
But from the two houses, there's one house is on, you're right.
My driveway pulling out, it's, I gotta tell you, there are days where I put my windows down, even in winter, and I do it by set. So the minute you start building over there, basically, I'm talking about six months of not doing a left-hand turn, because I will, you can't see the way...
Turn, 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 turn.
No, possibly with the site work and it'll improve ultimately, but initially, there's no way for me not to be inconvenienced, given the lay of, of my property and the way my driveway is, and that blind turn on, on Countryway. So, you know, it's possibly happy for you, but you, you have a God-given life, it's your property, we need walls to build, you know, that's how life is, so we're in it.
Okay. So I think we need to do things, just to summarize, we need to figure out when you guys can come back. We're suggesting the 27th of June. I don't know if that works for you timeframe-wise.
We can make it work.
I got, you gotta give John, I think, two weeks to go through, review the plans, and then get the plans out so that we can take a look at it.
But we're being in the middle by June 6.
By June 6?
By June 6.
I mean, if you need to, we can go to, what is it, the 11th?
July 11th, yeah.
If you need the 11th of July, let's, let's figure it out now, because we've got a couple of special permits coming up. Okay. So we feel submitted, you know, just a request to continue to...
Second Michael has a question.
Michael?
Well, I just, I wasn't sure if you're agreeing yet, but can, can we assume through this discussion that the board's satisfied that the only work that's been done out there is in preparation of getting the demolition permit, which is imminent, it's been signed off by all, all the appropriate boards, he's just waiting for the building inspector to sign it, and that...
And that no additional work will be done.
So we're gonna, you know, get the house down, fill the foundation, and then we're waiting for approvals, and we, you know, we're not gonna do anything without...
That, that works.
Permission, certainly.
Can I ask a question on that note? If, if there is some kind of historic picture-taking or sketching of the house, is there a timeframe that people, no one seems to be in the know of, of how fast the home, the house will be demolished? Do we know, because I, I actually have talked to people at the Historical Society that was, that are trying to figure out if there's something to do here, and if they do want some sketches or pictures, what is the timeframe for demolition?
I think it probably makes sense to have, you know, one person doing that work, and maybe everybody could just share their, you know, their pictures, instead of having, like, a lot of people up there.
Right, but who is that, and when would they go and do that?
Well, it sounds like Stephen Litchfield is the person that Doug is, is most comfortable with going up there.
Okay.
I believe he's on the Historic Commission. Doug Smith didn't seem to know anything about that, but they probably, you know, I'm gonna make sure that they do know about it and that that, that is gonna work. But I think we really need to hear from Doug when, you know, when he's planning on demolishing the house.
We've spoken about it, Mr. Litchfield will be known, if I take you, whatever he says, we'll do a little bit.
Okay, so you'll give him like a week or something to...
Wait a minute.
Okay, great.
And you might want to clarify, just for the public, what you had, I think, told us about the new demolition bylaw, is that it has to be approved by the Attorney General so it doesn't go into effect, so it's not technically in effect, even though at town meeting, we approved it?
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Okay, why don't you say that?
I do that, and that's a shame.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's...
So in the, I guess what I wanted to say to you is, in the future, we would have that in place.
Right.
And that would kick in, but in this particular case...
I have no doubt with more time, some more creative solution for this home and this lot would have been figured out. It's sad, but we, we are learning from it, trust me, I, you know, but it's sad.
Well, and I also wanted to make a comment, I think other situations have come up before where the people, the, us on the board have felt very similar to the public in a certain way, but we are tasked with basically following the regulations to some degree. I mean, we do have leeway, but Greg is correct in the sense that if it's conventionally, they are allowed three houses, we, we don't have as much leeway as maybe we would like. But I do certainly sympathize and actually very much agree with your opinion, so I appreciate it, but we are tasked with following the regulations. So in that case, if we felt that there was erroneous, it would be up to us as a board to maybe look at the zoning as an example, that it would allow that, and we'd have to go back, as we did in other, other situations, so. But again, thank you for your comments.
So I think we're all set, we're gonna, we're continued to, what time?
I think, well, June 27th at 7:30, but does someone want to make a motion?
No.
Because I think you guys need to go about it.
That's my idea. I just was babbling. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan and flexible open space special permit for Fred's Way at 305 Countryway until June 27th at 7:30 PM.
Second, all those favor?
Aye.
So you look on page two of John's, the first, first weekend reading that he gave you, the first weekend reading assignment he gave you, that summarizes, I think, a lot of it. DPW summarizes a lot. What I'd like to see, and I should, should have mentioned it earlier, is when you give the waiver, what, what, what the benefit would be to the town? This, then what's the benefit? And then I would also suggest you sit down with the DPW to talk about the looping the water, the, the, by the multipath and their memo. And you can do that all by the 6th of June. Okay?
There's a couple of me in the office. Thank you, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is the next street on Countryway, are you going to be Ethel's Way? And then we'll have Lucy and...
Yeah, Lucy and Desi.
I thought it was gonna be Wilma.
Wilma, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I guess I'm thinking even further back. Actually, wasn't the Flintstones based on?
The Henneman's, yeah.
Yeah, well, that was, yeah.
Probably, yeah.
I think it was based on Situate?
No, 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 well, I don't know.
June 6th is the anniversary of the Normandy invasion. I was reading your mail, but that, that's a very interesting observation on the part of Mr. Al.
Yes, yes, of course.
Acceptable DPW talk.
Yeah.
Our reaction when dealing with them.
At least from, at least from that direction.
I always have it stacked in the car.
Okay, that brings us to P45. I assume you face a salt marsh? Okay. Next item, I need to end this on public hearing for accessory dwelling special permit for 12 Salt Marsh Hill Drive. The applicants are the Smiths.
Very smooth.
Why don't you tell us what you're looking to do?
So I'm looking for a, a permit for an accessory dwelling for my mother-in-law, Elise, to be added to my house, and a small addition as well to the existing structure.
You want to describe what the addition is, or we going up, we going out, we going around?
We're going, so if you're looking at the house going to the right, approximately 27, 37 feet to the right.
So this is it right here?
Each, there's like two sections to it, each one's lower, lower than the main house.
So the roof line is not changing, you're just, you're building a lateral.
Well, the roof line would actually go lower in each section.
And in terms of areas that we're adding?
I am adding a...
It's two stories.
So I'm, I'm sorry, what are we, what are we adding here?
I'm changing a bedroom, an existing bedroom to a workspace. And over the addition, the in-law addition, I am putting a bedroom for my daughters. So that would be the core of my new house. For the addition for the in-laws, there's a living room, a kitchen, and a bedroom. Yeah, and then the mudroom is gonna be shared with the in-law residents and the main residents.
So the accessory dwelling is on the first floor, is that what I'm looking at?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Laura?
The accessory dwelling is going to be twenty-four percent of the primary dwelling. The accessory dwelling will be nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet. The primary dwelling with the new the approximately three thousand square feet. There was a question that came up yesterday, late in the afternoon, as we're beginning to try to wind down, preparing for the meeting. And that was when the original developer of the subdivision came into the planning board office and had some concerns. He's still in a butter, so he was notified of the public hearing. And the, the particular concern that seems to be the most relevant, he was concerned about the height of the, of the building with the addition, but the height really is, is not gonna impact him at all because there's not gonna be anything higher than what is there now. But he was concerned because on a prior special permit for the subdivision, there was a restriction that no houses in this development could exceed twenty-eight hundred square feet of floor area. And we talked about this with the applicant, I called town council, you know, after talking with Bill and so on. And the cleanest way to do it, as far as making sure that everything is, is copacetic with that condition, would be to modify the special permit, but that would involve another public hearing and an ad and notification and so on. And there are houses in that development that are over twenty-eight hundred square feet now. I looked at the assessor's records and two of them, there are four houses there, two of them are under, including this one, and two of them are over. So I'm not really sure what the board wants to do about that. I mean, the, the best thing would probably be to do that special permit modification, but, you know...
Then let me suggest that the board...
They have their attorney, if their attorney wants to do something else, maybe, you know...
But my, my thinking on it, in that is that just get a sense of the, the board as to whether they were in favor of, they would have a, would they have any issues with the accessory dwelling? Except there is none, then come back up and proceed with the modification. That would be the approach that I would suggest. I didn't know, any other comments or thoughts from the board?
I would have liked to have seen a plot plan and maybe even a subdivision plan. If it's that small of a subdivision, there's only four homes. I'm interested to know how this kind of sits on the land and where it sits relative to other structures nearby.
I think there is a site plan that was with the application.
Yeah, there's a small site plan.
I think it's in eight and a half five eleven.
I have a copy of, or I have a copy of the ad built, if that helps with the addition hand on by the...
Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing that, I don't, either I don't have it or I can't find it.
I don't think we have it in our packet.
Yeah, it's in there.
Oh, I'm sorry Karen.
It's hiding, but it's in.
Oh, great, thanks.
Boy, it's high, it's really high.
Here it is, it's L one hundred, this one?
Oh, is it?
Are you sure?
I don't have that.
I think two or three.
Unless I...
We don't have it either.
Unless it's someplace else.
Wait, do you want to just pass this one around and...
Yeah, that's, I just need a glance, I don't have to memorize it.
While, while we're passing papers about, Laura, do you happen to know how the other houses in the development exceeded the twenty-eight hundred square foot limitation? Did it just happen, or...
Yeah, no, I, what was supposed to happen was, there was supposed to be a restriction recorded with each deed.
Okay.
And we had somebody check the registry that can get into their computer and, you know, get into the, the registry computer records. And apparently that was never, that never happened. So the, you know, the attorney for the applicant...
It's lot three.
Probably should have done that.
Lot three, okay, thank you.
But two of the houses didn't, that didn't see it.
Did, did, did that restriction make it into the deed for this house?
Do you have it drawn in, or it might be easier?
Oh, okay, thanks.
Here's, here's the existing dwelling.
Yep.
It's, it's in the special permit.
No, I, I understand.
But it's not in the deed.
So it's not exactly that shit.
No, as far as I can see.
Right.
So what's new, this piece?
No, the red, this thing.
If I were the, if I were the owner, I'd be pitching a waiver argument, you know, about the idea that... No, no notice, we rely upon the public record and we did what we were supposed to do and...
Well, it's not counting to...
Except for these guys.
No, I don't want it.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
And I, I don't know if I'd get too agitated over two hundred square feet.
Well, it's actually, I think this is going to be thirty-nine ninety-six.
Okay, so it's, it's almost four, yeah, okay.
So I'm sorry, I missed the conversation about why things went past twenty-eight hundred square feet.
There was supposed to be a restriction recorded with each deed, and it looks like that was never done. And that would have been done, you know, I think, we've talked about this a little bit, at least Karen and I have talked about it. I think we need to be doing more recording of things at the registry and more, you know, checking of things. But the attorney for the applicants, you know, typically would, would have done that.
Mm-hmm. What was the thought process behind the restriction at the time? Just that they didn't want like overly large McMansion-type houses?
They've got water views.
The, yeah, the, the applicants were the people uphill of this property, and they wanted it developed in a certain way.
Okay. That makes sense.
They wanted a lot of control over what was going on.
I don't know if you've been up there, it's pretty piece of land.
Mm-hmm. So will this, as far as you can tell, do anything to those views, or do anything that the, that the original applicants might have objected to?
Well, I think their main objection was the height, but you actually spoke to them yesterday, you spoke to Phil.
They seemed concerned about the height, that they were, that's what their main concern was. They, they were the ones who pointed out that the restriction was twenty-eight hundred square feet. And so I said, well, they could make a comment and come to the public hearing, and they said they would knock on the applicant's door.
Well...
But we're not getting, this is not higher than the existing house, in fact.
And, and as I recall, from what I'm hearing, the fact that that restriction didn't make it into the deed falls squarely on the shoulders of the individual who's complaining. Is that right?
So he was the applicant?
More or less, yeah, I think he should have been responsible, yeah, for doing that.
Well...
He's not here to talk to you.
I guess, going back to the approach that I had suggested earlier is, is if we come back up and, and get a sense of the board that there's no problem with the accessory dwelling, then to come back up and informally come back up and look to modify the subdivision. Does that approach work?
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
That work for you?
Yeah, you know, it's, it seems like the, the purpose of the limitation is, is pretty much kind of a moot point at this point, you know?
I mean, if two of the four have already done it and the third one's about to do it, then you got to be...
Yeah, it seems superfluous.
Yeah.
Well, and other than the, you know, the, the topic that we're talking about as far as the deed restrictions, I mean, just some comments about, it seems perfect in the sense of it's clearly, I wouldn't even call it subordinate. It looks like it's part of the house, it steps down very nicely. You know, if I were looking at this without knowing, I would just think it's part of the house. So I mean, I think as far as the bylaw and what it's supposed to do, it fits very nicely aesthetically into that. I do have a question about, is the basement, because you have here on the, one of the elevations, there's windows underneath that. Is the basement extended underneath the accessory?
So the, the, the front yard is on a hill, goes down in the back, it's a walkout basement.
Right. But is that basement that's under the accessory dwelling, will that be part of the main house, or will that be part of the accessory dwelling?
It is going to be used as a shed, actually, or it'll be unfinished and not available space, I guess.
Okay, so there's, there will be no access directly from the, the current foundation?
Uh, no.
But there'll be access, like...
From outside.
That's what you show on the back, there's like a barn door?
Yeah, exactly.
Let's keep your lawn bowl.
Yeah, nice touch, I like the barn.
The children are taking over, we'll try to keep it out.
Yeah, I like the barn door.
That's so the mother-in-law can get the mower out and mow the lawn?
Yeah, no, well... Well, yeah, I was just asking that to see if that was actually increasing the floor area from underneath the other, I mean, it wouldn't really count anyway, but... Well, I guess it could, because it's walkout, I'm not sure how the regulations work on that.
Seven foot, two inches, I think.
But as far as an accessory dwelling, it seems to fit the, the spirit of the bylaw very well.
Does it have a second means of egress?
Uh, there's a back door and a front door.
I'm missing the back door.
It's off of the deck, it's a sliding glass door off the living room.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
And they, they don't, they don't actually show the deck per se on the plan, but it's shown on the elevation.
Watch that first step, it's a doozy.
Yeah.
Oh, so that, the, there's steps down to the backyard from this deck, then?
It doesn't show it.
Not on the drawing, we haven't decided whether we're connecting the two decks yet, or stepping down from our deck.
Connecting the two, oh, is there a deck on the existing house?
My deck is the existing deck, so it'd be like, there could be a walkway created from, uh, the staircase down. We share a staircase.
Guess that this is out here.
See a fireman's pole to grandma's house.
Yeah, but there, if you're extending that deck, it's a fair, it's what, twelve or so, or sixteen feet? Well, I mean, from the proposed deck to the older deck, if you were going to extend that, you'd have to build it...
It'd be a walkway from the staircase.
Oh, okay, I see.
We would share the same staircase.
The only thing I wanted to mention with the, with the modification is that with another public hearing, there will be an add and there will be, you know, some, some costs to that. You know, which we don't have anything in the budget for that, so...
You're aware that, if we had, hold the hearing to come back up and modify the subdivision, there's a cost associated with it?
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know, I don't know what the number is.
With a legal add and do some certified mail, mailings.
Not thousands, maybe not even hundreds.
Oh, hundreds, yeah, definitely hundreds, yeah.
Probably hundreds.
And how is the parking handled?
Uh, she's negotiated a parking spot in the garage.
And so I'm gonna go to the garage.
I'll essentially be in the driveway. So it's two-car garage, we have, we'll have three vehicles between us.
Because it is space for like four cars, like one plus two in the garage, so...
So it's the same driveway, there's no new curb cut anywhere, no?
Just a walkway from our driveway to her driveway.
And my car is there every day.
So if, if someone, we, we continue, when will we continue it?
Uh, June twenty-seventh again, and I don't know how long, you want to leave maybe an hour for three oh five?
Uh, three oh five would probably take an hour.
Okay, that's how we got it written.
Okay. So three oh five will take an hour, then we'll come back, are we gonna do two hearings the same night?
Yeah, yeah. All I put in the motion is just to continue this one, because the other one, you know, really is dependent on...
One clarification, Bill and Laura, before we move. I was curious, because there's a piece of house being added that's not an accessory dwelling, it's an addition to the existing house. I think that we're still okay, in other words, if you didn't put the new addition on the accessory dwelling at nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet, it would still be allowed, because it's less than forty percent of the house as it exists now. But I know we talked about this situation where you would add to your house just to make it large enough so that the accessory dwelling that you put on it complied.
Yeah.
This one is twenty-four percent, so I think there's plenty of...
We're not that close.
Yeah, and it's only about a four hundred square foot.
It's a good, it's a good...
But the accessory dwelling is, is limited to the first floor, is it the whole thing?
No, it's just the first floor.
Okay. So we don't really have any sort of say over the, the second floor, right?
No, no, we don't, it's just we discussed the issue that if...
As a right.
Yeah, we're just approving this as an accessory dwelling.
It's an interesting situation, that's all.
Yeah. Okay, so we're continuing to, oh, we need a motion?
Yeah, I say, I didn't want to cut off any discussion, are we...
Motion has precedence.
Okay. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the accessory dwelling special permit to June twenty-seventh at eight-thirty PM.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So that gives you the continuation, then talk with Laura about figuring out what the, the, the newspaper ad and the notification about us and that for the modification are. Do that, and then we'll schedule that meeting, and then we'll schedule your accessory dwelling immediately thereafter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You should talk to your neighbors about sharing the cost.
What?
Of, of having to fix their problem.
Well, no, you talk to the two neighbors that are over.
Yeah, yeah, exactly right.
You talk to the right neighbors.
It's just like a party wall.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, it was, yeah, I gave it to you.
I didn't get what it's on.
You gave it back to me.
I, I just saw floating through your...
You were right, it's floating.
I know you're trying to...
Where is it floating is the question, no, I'm not, I'm not trying hard.
Is it in the drawing itself?
The reason I said what I did about your coworker is that those, those referrals that come to me are all family law related. Someone's, someone's marriage is...
He didn't, he just said...
Yeah.
Tried throwing me under the bus to experience with you as a attorney.
Okay, so we've had fifteen minutes till our next special accessory dwelling special permit. We can do counting minutes, dump in a report.
I have a...
Not in any particular order, as long as I know which is which.
I have a comment, just based on, I mean, real quickly, based on the last, since it was twenty-seventh. I found out that I am going to China, so I will not be here on June twenty-seventh, just to let you know, Karen. I don't know if that matters, but...
Oh, Bob Green is not here, we didn't hear from him.
We didn't hear from him.
Yeah.
Would that be when we would vote on the...
I, I don't know, I just want, that's why I wanted to throw that out there, because I know, I just got my visa approved, so, yeah.
Um, they can always continue further if they don't like the four or five.
Well, let's go that way and we'll, we'll see, and we'll see if we can get...
But it needs, the, the flexible open space plan would need four or five, right?
You, you got that mosquito right there by your head. Kill it.
It's still there.
Okay.
But don't we have the, we have the, the new law that's in effect that you can read and catch up?
You can miss one, which would work for Bob.
Okay. Work for Bob and a lot of the work for...
For work for Richard, yeah.
It depends how long...
Unless they get to a vote.
Or up to China.
It should, it's for two, it's only for two weeks, so I'll be the last two weeks of, so that meeting, I think it's just the one meeting on the twenty-seventh that I'll have to miss.
So then we can let the, we can let the people know, say, we can let them know that it would have to be unanimous voted before they leave the president. If they vote on the special permit, next time.
On the next time.
We'll let them know.
Okay, but we'll actually pick up Bob.
But he hasn't...
Bob Green, yeah.
But because of the...
Oh, he'd have to catch up today.
Get up on...
Well, he'll have to catch up prior to the next, the next meeting.
Right, he'd have to get today's...
Catch up on, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have a counting?
Uh, we do.
Do we have a, a meeting on the thirteenth?
Of June?
June?
Yes.
Okay, so I will be available for that, I leave on the fourteenth.
Oh, good.
Another, cutting it right down the line.
So, nice of you to plan yourselves.
All right, I move that we pay two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents to Chesia Consulting Services for the engineering peer review for three oh five Country Way flexible open space definitive subdivision plan. In addition, a bill for two hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents for the legal ads in the Situate Mariner for Seven Pennycrest accessory dwelling and three oh five Country Way flexible open space definitive subdivision plan. And eleven dollars and fifty cents for nameplates for Bob Green. Um, that's it.
Any second?
Second.
A lot of favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, we sign those, we have minutes?
We don't, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Liaison reports? I don't think we, none of us have received our official notification to be sworn in for our liaisons, have we?
Oh, do you get sworn in, um-
I don't think so.
Maybe on some of them.
I don't know.
What, the, um, the seawater, um, conference rise, did you go to that last, um, was it May sixteenth?
Yeah.
Or eighteenth?
Yeah, yeah, um, I've been involved with the, getting the grant and, uh, organizing and so on. Although the planner from Marshfield really led off the whole, you know, the whole project. So, the slides and, um, PowerPoint are, are on the website now if you want to take a look at them.
Okay, great.
And sea level rise is coming. Um, the main thing that they still need to do is to do some more modeling for wave action. They got the sea level rise and they got the storm surge, but then where the waves splash over the sea wall and then you get this huge filling up back at the end.
Sort of stagnant water, still water kind of analysis, you know, and there wasn't any real, uh, wave action, and you know that's-
It's gonna be a major fault.
It's gonna be the significant one.
The big deal, yeah, so, um, so it was, it was good as far as it went, but it's gotta just-
What's that?
Not to mention what it does to the roadway on Ocean Avenue.
Well, yeah, I think some of the areas they said would be completely underwater, but probably more likely they would not only be underwater, but gone.
Hmm. Okay, I think the, what do I have, the, the next meeting of the infrastructure, I think, is the twenty-eighth, which will involve a tour of the gate school. We got town planning report?
Oh, okay, well, one of the things I was gonna mention was the sea level rise study, which, you know, was just-
I'm sorry.
But that's okay. Um, the open space plan, we're making some progress on that. We've almost got all the open space parcels identified, and those are gonna be a map layer that we can overlay with, um, you know, the water, the zone twos to the water supply, um, the wetlands and so on, and really see how much upland in town is protected, open space. It looks like it's gonna be a lot. You know, we're going through these map sheets and coloring in the ones that, that are open space. Some of these sheets, it's all open space. It's, it's amazing how much open space the town owns, um, which is both good and bad. I mean, it's wonderful to have it, but it's land that's, you know, not ever gonna be developed, so, um, for residential development, that may be a good thing because of the cost of schools, but if there's any that would be, you know, it's mostly not in any locations that's, that's, you know, suitable for any kind of commercial development.
Laura, are there any, what are the accepted uses for open space besides just having to be vacant open land? Are they gonna be used for anything at all?
Um, it's, it's managed by the Conservation Commission, so uses have to go through them.
Each of them have a document that spells out what can be done on those particular pieces of land. Okay. In other words, like, for example, they, they may or may not allow snowmobiling. Most of them don't allow snowmobiling to town. Uh, some of them allow hunting. Okay. The, the, the way that the verbiage is, allows hunting. Uh, some of them allow hi- hiking, some of them allow overnight camping, but not multiple day camping. But each one of them is different. They haven't been standardized, but each one of them is different, um, based on the, the, the time that they were bought. We're, we're, we're less inclusive in terms of activities now than we, than we were initially when we started. Are, are these deed restrictions or are they, can, can they- They're part of the conservation-
Conservation restrictions.
I, I'm just wondering if perhaps they could be modified at some point so it becomes a, a uniform use, or we might look to... I, I, I know, for instance, that, um, you know, sometimes there are, there are funds available for, for people that are, um, growing indigenous species. Um, and if we wanted to, to try and preserve some sort of, um, flora that might otherwise be endangered, and we have land that we could use for that, we might be able to get perhaps a grant or something to, to do those kinds of things.
That's the kind of thing the Conservation Commission might, you know, might really like to see.
Okay.
What's hard to do is to take them out of conservation because-
That takes an act of, act of the legislature, doesn't it?
Yeah.
But the, the restriction themselves can be modified. I think the, the local Conservation Board are the holder of the, in, like in Maxwell case, Maxwell Trust case where they're the holder of it. They may suggest it, but the ConCon can, can make restrictions or change the restrictions of what's being done. Okay.
They, they can make, you know, tweaks, but not like-
Not, not major wholesale changes.
Right.
Yeah.
So both the open space plan and the economic development plan are both gonna use that, and then I think we'll also get some maps out of it that, you know, we can actually give people and say, you know, look at all the open space, um, so.
And in terms of economic development, good thing you reminded me. I, I talked with Sean Harrison. I have agreed to write Sean a memo indicating that we would be happy to interview the candidate for the economic development, for their recommendation and the joint appointment.
Can we also talk for a minute about whether there's any interest in getting that committee, making that committee maybe a five-member instead of a seven-member? I bounced the idea off, off Tricia. She didn't have any, any problem with it. The problem with having the seven members, well, it's good to have seven members from the standpoint of just presenting a lot of people that are interested in something, but the kinds of people that it tends to attract are very kind of high-powered, you know, maybe a little bit on the intense side, and having seven people like that on a committee was, wasn't always, I, I think it kind of, maybe things would have been a little bit easier.
You need George Washington as the committee chair.
Well, if I remember right, I think that we, Dan had originally proposed seven because back in the nineteen sixties or whenever, when it was formed, that was the, it was seven people, right? Like, we, they, we just kept the number that it was when it was initially formed.
Yeah. So anyway, it, it's just a thought, you know, that-
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, maybe some thought could go into whether it should be seven or five.
Maybe I'll, I'll propose some, maybe that in the memo when I send to- My concern is that if you do that, then you're not appointing anybody.
Well, they have to appoint one because they only have four.
Yeah.
Um, so. So.
Anyway, so I, I will draft a memo and I'll get that to you, so.
Great.
Anything else with the board?
It was, um, I'm sorry about this. I, I brought this from last, last time or two times ago. The, um, does the zoning board take that, the, the, the village overlay district? I mean, what was the sort of course of action? I don't know if I wrote that down, so I apologize, of what, what our next steps were in, in this regard.
I think that, that this would be something the planning board would, would, um, you mean that the tweak for the frontage or the other change?
I'm sorry, the other change, adding the properties to the southern por- portion on the other side of the Driftway.
Well, maybe this is a good five minutes to talk about that a little bit.
I thought we were gonna, the, then we have the group looking at it that already, and we were gonna just see how, what their study, how their study mapped out.
Oh, the economic development?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember what our next steps were.
They're not necessarily gonna be ready for Fall Town meeting.
No, I'm not suggesting they are. I'm not suggesting we're ready either, but, but it doesn't make sense to have three people or three different groups looking at that same, the same problem or the same issue and the same piece of property.
Yeah.
Property.
So really the, we're saying the next step is really the E D C should look-
E D C study.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I think their planner is going to look at that, and, um, it sounded like he was, he was quite interested in, in that, in whether that, that district could be expanded, um, or whether it's, you know, really in the right place where it is now.
Do we have any influence or any, um, resources that we can mobilize to assist the E D C in getting past the sort of level of frustration they're feeling?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping-
Hospitablely put, wasn't it?
I'm hoping they're gonna be feeling like they're accomplishing something now that, you know, the study is, is starting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm planning to attend the next meeting, you know, just as representing the planning board anyway.
Okay. Well, well, perhaps then you could convey to them that we're in their court and ask for help.
Yeah.
Should I tell them to call Eric?
If, if you want things to change, call Eric. Doesn't mean they'll be changed right or they'll work better, but they'll change. Okay, it's now nine fifteen. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, accessory dwelling special permit for one forty-seven Water Street. The applicant said hello. Introduce yourself and tell us what you're proposing to do.
I'm Attorney Stephen Garrett for the applicant, and with me is Kristin Lilly tonight, one of the owners.
Okay.
So for you this evening is an application for a special permit for an accessory dwelling under five thirty point one E for a premises located at one forty-seven Water Street. This application is to legitimize an existing accessory dwelling located in the second story of a detached three-car garage. The premises consists of approximately five hundred and forty-seven square feet of living space with headroom of seven four and a total square foot of seven hundred and eighty-four square feet. The main dwelling of the premises consists of four thousand thirty-two square feet averaging an approximate percentage of the whole at thirteen point five percent. The existing septic system is capable of handling a four-bedroom system, uh, four-bedroom dwellings, and we have applied to the Board of Health for a septic system upgrade for five bedrooms, which is currently pending. We do have the requisite design that meets the criteria necessary to handle the flow from this added bedroom. The, um, the, the site itself is a single-family residential, uh, lot with approximately a hundred and thirty-five square feet of land. There is ample area for parking, and the accessory dwelling unit has been incorporated into the garage and is subordinate to the main, in the same design and character of the main dwelling structure. You can see from the materials submitted by the applicant that the, um, carriage house, and the first page is a site plan showing carriage house built on a slab with a one-bedroom on the second story, and the existing septic system located between the two. There is no necessity for any sort of hybrid septic system or even a pump for this particular added bedroom. It can be incorporated into the existing system by grabbing that, just unfortunately. The next page is the topographical site plan for the entire lot. The structure itself is outside of the, uh, of the relevant buffer zones for conservation. With the exception of the work that is likely to be done at the septic system area will be within side, within the two-hundred-foot buffer zone to the rivers. And we, I have spoken to the conservation agent about that. He has pulled the file and, um, my understanding is walked the site. And we're pretty confident that we'll be able to actually do that with a request for determination of applicability as opposed to a normal N O I because it's a septic system upgrade as opposed to a full installation. But we do anticipate filing for what is recommended by the Conservation Agency, you know, within the next week or so. So we'll have that, of course, as a condition of the building permit. The next page shows the elevations. As you can see, the, the garage itself was built pursuant to a building permit back in two thousand. It complies with all zoning requirements at, at the time. There is no exterior changes to the structure with the exception, with one exception. The, uh, current access or egress to the premises is through that door in the right-hand side on the north front elevation, and that is the only way in and out. There is on the plan that we have submitted, it would be sheet, sheet four of the plan shows a proposed deck that will be installed with a door, a small dormer on the back of the unit, with a door so that there would be a second form of egress out the deck and then down the stairs towards that driveway area. All located in the back inside of the structure, um, almost invisible from the front, certainly even the side. The, uh, it would be, the deck in the stairway would obviously be of the same architectural integrity as the main wall, the main structure.
That's the only new, the only new construction?
Correct. The unit itself, um, exists of a single bedroom, bathroom, a small hallway, a, a galley type kitchen, L-shaped galley kitchen, and a living room area. The premises has been occupied from time to time by either the owner or the owner's in-laws. There is currently a, um, uh, a stair lift in the, in the premises for one of the owner's mother-in-laws who comes to visit on, in the summertime. The owners are aware of the bylaw requirements to notify the new owners of the premises should the property be sold, as well as the requirement that an owner has to live on the premises, either in the accessory dwelling or in the main structure. The, uh, because of the calculation for, I explained the two areas that I mentioned at the beginning. The, the, our dormant, um, roof lines inside, so there isn't full height bedroom in the entire room, on the entire floor, so the building code requires, asks you to- based on seven foot four, but because the, it was some sort of, uh, not, it was a little bit of a difference in the new bylaw that didn't go through, we decided that we would give both calculations to the board, and it's, it's just under eight hundred square feet if you calculate it with, including the knee wall areas that, you know, are above the kitchen cabinets and things like that. There are no kitchen cabinets actually on the side of the wall above the, um, the countertops because it's angled down, there's no place for them. There's some on the, on the side, but that's a, that's a side wall.
Is there no, um, is there no plumbing in this right now?
There is plumbing, yes. This is an existing unit that, um, was built without a special permit, and as I said in the preamble, we're here to, under the bylaw, to legitimize the existing unit and to obviously, um, request a special permit for the existing improvements as well as the proposed improvements for the access to make that a sure cause.
So does this go to the existing septic system right now?
It, it, it does, actually go to the existing septic system, yes, yeah. It's already tied in, and it has water. We have a well, so it's, it's not on town. One of the seven people in town that have a well, I was told today, I, I had no idea. So there's seven wells in the entire town.
Right.
But there's fifteen signs that say well order.
Yeah. According to Jennifer, there's seven, and two of them are at, one of them's at one forty-seven and one forty-nine.
Okay, Laura?
Portable wells.
Um, it, it looks pretty straightforward. Um, I mean, the design, this is the, the kind of structure that you want to have preserved through something like this. Um, you know, if this helps, um, you know, maintain it. The, the sewer, uh, the septic system, um, Jennifer Sullivan had made a note about that needing to be upgraded. There was also a note about the riverfront area from the Patrick, from the, uh, Conservation Agent. So I think, um, all of those things are, are issues that the town is aware of, and otherwise, um, there did seem to be enough parking because of the garage on the first floor and, um, you know, available parking in the driveway. The percent in this actually came to thirteen and a half, um, based on the living space being the habitable space. And if the board ever wanted to, I think you could adopt some, um, of your own, um, interpretation of some of this bylaw so you could have, you know, some standards that maybe are a little bit similar to some of the pieces of the bylaw that, that didn't pass. But, um, in any case, um, it looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the existing bylaw gives us a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, that's true.
Richard, say?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Um, so, I'm sorry, when was the garage constructed again?
The garage itself was constructed pursuant to a building permit in two thousand.
Okay.
But the improvements that were put in here were sometime later. I'm, I'm not really sure when they actually were constructed. The building permit application, which I reviewed for the garage, had this as finished storage space, and then at some point it became an apartment.
Okay. And, um, I wasn't quite sure, when you were talking about the chairlift, were you proposing the chairlift for here?
The chairlift exists. It's actually installed.
In, in this unit?
It's already in the, if you look at the, see the stairs where they take the, the right-hand turn there or left-hand turn?
Um, well, which, which plan are you looking at?
I'm sorry, page four of four, on sheet four of four. The chairlift that is bungled along that, sat that end wall to the left, so.
So it's a stair climber. It comes up like the railing and follows the slope of the stair.
Yeah, and you sit in it and it takes you up around the, around the landing.
It's not a vertical, it's not a vertical lift?
No, 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 no. It's one of the ones that they take the chair rail out, the handrail out, I'm sorry, and they install the, or someone to the handrail.
Okay. I, I wasn't, and I just wasn't sure if that was part of this unit or part of the existing house or the main, main house, I'm sorry. And is the intention for the, the mother-in-law to be in this unit, like you said, during the summer, or?
Yeah, she will likely come back to visit again, um, and, um, but for the most part, it's family. We have, they have polished- We have, they have college-age students that, you know, they like to live on their own and, but right now it is, it's tot, it's not rented or it's totally for the family.
Okay.
And there's no intention to rent it out. It's just, this was to legitimize an existing, um, living space for the mother-in-law that's coming to visit.
Right. Yeah, I don't think I have any questions. It looks, uh, pretty, fairly straightforward and the architecture looks quite nice and it's very subordinate, so.
Yeah, I thought it was an antique.
Yeah, I know. I, I, that's why I asked the question, because I actually thought it was much, from these pictures. Maybe it's the quality, I, what I mean is the black and white quality of the pictures makes it look a little older. But, and anyway, uh, no more questions.
Eric?
Thank you for your, uh, your willingness to follow the rules and to come and ask us to, uh, to ratify what's been done and, and, you know, I, I admire you for that. Um, it looks fine to me.
Uh, will the, uh, building inspector be involved in this? Do you need a building permit to do this work?
Yeah, the, the, the next step of our process is to actually file a building permit for the, the deck in the, um, the second form of egress of the stairs as well as to have the existing improvements that went beyond the finished storage space, um, ratified by the building department. Uh, what he's, what Neil's told us is that he won't issue a certificate, certificate of occupancy, but he will inspect what's there, what he can see, and then give us a letter that states that it complies with the zoning code, I mean, the, the building code.
Okay.
And we, we understand that we may have to, we've already recommended that we'll open a wall for him. He can look at whatever he needs to look at, whatever he needs to see. We'd be happy to do that.
I would think floor construction might be more of a, an issue than wall construction to him, but
Yeah.
Um, how, how is this heated? Is it heated? Is it?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Does it have its own separate heating system? And where is that located? Down, in the garage downstairs?
Downstairs in the garage.
Where the laundry hookup is shown?
Yes.
There's a fire resistance rating, uh, when you're living above a garage, which I'm sure you're aware of and Neil will enforce. And the other comment I'd have, I guess, uh, is that he may have some concern with the fact that those two means of egress are so, uh, close to one another. Ideally, they would be, uh, uh, removed so that, you know, you had two possible paths in case of an emergency that didn't, you know, it sort of intersect. I, I don't know if that's a concern for him or not, but it may be.
No, I don't have any more questions. I think this, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and I'm also fine with it. Do you have anything in the motion department?
We have motions. Uh, this finding's a fact and then to approve, so two separate motions.
Okay. So the first one is, I may, I move to make the following findings a fact. Number one, according to the town of Situate assessor's records and the property at one forty seven Border Street is owned by R. Stephen and Christine Lilly. Number two, on April thirtieth, twenty thirteen, R. Stephen and Kristen Lilly applied for a special permit for an accessory dwelling through their attorney, Stephen M. Guard. The accessory dwelling will be on the second floor of a detached three-car garage carriage house at one forty seven Border Street. Number three, the property is located in the residential R two zoning district on a lot of approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet. Number four, according to the assessor, assessor's records, the floor area of the primary dwelling is four thousand and thirty-two square feet. The floor area of the accessory dwelling, as shown on the plan, is approximately seven hundred and eighty-four square feet. There is five hundred and forty-seven square feet of living space with headroom of at least seven foot four inches and two hundred and thirty-seven square feet in the eve area space. Number five, the floor area of the accessory dwelling will be thirteen point five percent of the living area of the primary dwelling, which is less than the forty percent maximum in the bylaw. It meets the requirements of five three zero dot two F for floor area of the accessory dwellings. Number six, the site plan shows a three-car garage carriage house and circular driveway for the house. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the accessory dwelling and ample parking for the primary dwelling. Number seven, the applicant has submitted a signed, notarized statement that he will live on the property. Number eight, the application meets the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw, section five three zero, for an accessory dwelling special permit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a decision?
Yep. Um, I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling at one forty seven Border Street with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall meet all the requirements of the building department, board of health, department of public works, fire department, water department, and other town agencies. Number two, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled, site and sewage, carriage house, number one forty seven Border Street in Situate, prepared for the applicant, owner, R. Stephen Lilly, dated, uh, April fifteenth, twenty thirteen, by EAS Survey Incorporated. Sheets one, two, and five of five. Photo page, carriage house, one forty seven Border Street dated March twenty-fifth, twenty thirteen. First floor plan sheet, one of four. Second floor plan sheet, two of four. Second floor area plan sheet, three of four. Second floor egress plan sheet, four of four, carriage house, one forty seven Border Street dated March twenty-fifth, twenty thirteen, prepared by EAS Survey Incorporated. Number three, the property at one forty seven Border Street shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units. The existing dwelling and the accessory dwelling as proposed. The footprint, number of bedrooms, and/or square footage shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. Number four, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. Number five, the planning board will require an onsite inspection for conformance to the approved plans and these conditions prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued for the accessory dwelling. Number six, no on-street parking shall be permitted. Number seven, the applicant will be required to upgrade the septic systems to comply with title five per the board of health requirements. Number eight, this special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within ninety days of the date of filing with the town clerk. The owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. Number nine, this special permit shall lapse within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time in accordance with MGL, chapter forty A, section nine. Number ten, the planning board reserves the right to review compliance with this special permit at any time. This special permit shall terminate if the use is not in accordance with this, this decision and its conditions. Number eleven, at the request of the planning board, an affidavit shall be provided that either the primary or the accessory unit is owner occupied. And number twelve, at each transfer of ownership of the property, a new affidavit that the owner understands the requirements of the special permit and intends to reside on the property shall be provided to the planning board. Second.
Alan's? Second.
I have a question. Um, I think it's paragraph number nine.
Two years?
Yeah, seeing as we are ratifying an already existing use, do we need to, you know, it's already been used for that purpose and the construction is already there? Do we, are we looking at what's been done in the past?
The deck and stairs have to be, have to be built.
Yeah.
That's fine. I just wanted to ask the question.
It does need the second means of egress.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did have a question. The, um, the, the special permit that was granted, I like the way it was eleven to twelve as far as the transfer of the ownership goes. The, you know, the owner will file an affidavit, the owner understands the requirements of the special permit. I was just curious because I thought I read in the application, or maybe the bylaw, that the new owner was required to submit an, uh, an application for a special permit going forward. And I, I wondered if that
That was the non-voted?
That was in, in front of town meeting, but it was
Recognizing that, okay, that was one of the
It was not passed by town meeting.
Because I thought it was, I, I thought I saw it on something that was actually current and I knew that it hadn't passed. But in any event, thank you for that clarification.
Maybe next year.
Expect your support at town meeting.
Yes, right.
For everything we ever want to do.
Okay. What do we get next? Can we do the, um, Hennessy property?
Sure. I don't think they're coming.
Yeah, if we do it, then they can leave.
Yeah. So that's
Talk, talk us through the Hennessy property and what we need to sign and vote.
Okay, back in two thousand nine or so, give or take a year. Um, the planning board approved a, uh, development for a property. It's, it became known as the Glen. There are ten, uh, dwelling units. There was a large amount of open space that was purchased by CPC, which, you know, doesn't really add to the, the value because the town had to purchase it. But there was other open space. And part of this development involved the applicant giving the town an acre of land to put a, um, stand pipe on in the west end. And in return, they were going to get a reduction in their water connection fees. It never really went forward and the town didn't really want the land all that much. And the applicant kind of got, you know, sort of stuck figuring out what the town wanted, what the town didn't want. They seemed to be getting different answers from different places. So they did get an attorney involved and eventually a settlement was reached. And that's the letter from, um, I think it's from town council, Murphy Hesse.
Yep.
Um, and it says that there, there is going to be a reduction in the water fees. Um, the land is not going to be transferred and I think that's, that's about it. I think the reason for the reduction in the water fees was all the, um, inconvenience they had to, they had to go through with, um, a lot of delays, a lot of changes of opinion from different town officials. Um, there were a couple of different water, um, superintendents during that time, so I think that may have been part of it. So anyway, the agreement has been voted by the selectmen. It's been agreed to by the DPW and the only piece that's left is for the planning board to agree to it. So, I don't know if anybody had any
Discussion from the board?
It looks like it includes that they're going to loop the water main.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any use duct wire and stuff?
Up to the current code.
Yeah. So.
No discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a, a more elaborate motion?
I don't know. I don't see one in front of me, but
Yeah, I thought I saw one actually somewhere around
Well, there was the, here's, wait, here's one forty seven. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's one forty seven.
This is the, this one right here, Laura. That's the, you know, modification to six.
That's Dear Common.
Boy, how many trees do we care?
Uh, too many.
Recycling lumber now in old houses.
Are, are we just, are we just going to make a motion here to, to approve the settlement that everybody else has already approved?
Yes.
Okay. I think, I think this one, I think you, you're on your own for this one.
Okay.
Um, but you could just say that you, you ratify the agreement between, um, the town and the, and the Hennessys.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I second that.
Discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who else to sign? Anybody sign?
Uh, we'll do a letter, um, to the selectmen and, um, and you'll sign it?
And I'll sign.
Great.
And are the people in the hallway for Dear Common? Because it's rapidly approaching nine forty-five. Not that I'm interested in knowing what the brewing score is, but
Um, in a few seconds. I know you sent us the, um, about Cohasset and the, the payment, um, for the, the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I was curious, like, why, why did you send that?
What the heck was that all about?
It was interesting. I didn't mean, that didn't sound right, but you know.
Well, no, 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 no. It, it really does make sense because there's so much kind of stuff that I can see would seem kind of random. But, um, that was because initially there was the idea that the town couldn't accept money for constructing a sidewalk. DOR, the Department of Revenue for the state, really doesn't like towns to do this. But there is a way around it and they found it in Cohasset. So if they found it in Cohasset, you know, I think
That's kind of why you were using it as an example. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and their payments that they got in Cohasset were like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, they were much more exciting than, than ours, but they were still
Now, does sidewalk stabilization fund, is that many, do we have to do anything with the state?
Um, no, just create it, just like the economic development stabilization fund. It would be similar to that, but it would be for constructing sidewalks.
But we'd have to vote that at a town meeting.
Yeah, would have to be voted at town meeting.
And that just creates it. So I don't, I'm not looking for anything from the state at all on it.
No approval by the state or anything like that.
Normal bylaw approval.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
As far as I know. Yeah.
Seems like a good idea.
So does, do you all get upset about this because essentially we're, we're, we're creating our own tax and, and administering ourselves without being, having, having the state look over our shoulders? Is that why they get upset?
Not when you explain it that way.
I think it's kind of like that, yeah.
We're creating a sidewalk fund.
I understand, but, but if we're, if we're generating money outside of the, you know, the normal tax structure.
Yeah, well, they, they didn't feel that when a developer gave money that it was really a gift. They felt that it was coerced.
Okay.
It's going to be coerced.
That's, that's the definition of taxes, I recall.
So, yes, they didn't like that.
Okay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, it's requests for modifications, numbers six and sixteen for Dear Common, flexible open space, open space special permit, I'm sorry. Gentlemen of the floors, yours, introduce yourself and tell us what you're doing.
Good evening. I'm, uh, Terrence Tedespi. I'm here tonight with Mike McSherry. And, uh, we're managers of, uh, Dear Common Two LLC. And we're in the process of, uh, commencing the Dear Common subdivision. That is a flexible open space subdivision approved in two thousand and eight. And then it was not built for a couple of reasons and it's, uh, getting back on track. We're also here with Gene Blanchard, attorney Gene Blanchard. The real subject at hand, I think you were just talking about, was the sidewalk fund. I'm just going to pull this up here as that does. In any event, uh, just going through some pre-construction issues here to get the project started. One of the, uh, items is the thirty-three thousand dollar payment to the sidewalk fund. It's mentioned in a couple of places in the decision. Uh, in, in one instance, it was tied into a discussion of potentially getting an easement to an address property to loop the water over to Christopher Ren Road. Uh, we've been working with, with Dear Butter, actually with both the butters for about a month now. Everything that has had phone conversations, had some meetings onsite with, uh, Mr. Euclid. Sort of gone through that process. I actually spoke, spoke to Mr. Euclid last night. And he has decided that this town, he doesn't want to go through it. He was very reasonable when he met us on the property. We talked about a bunch of things, embarrassed construction, timing, you know, construction events, et cetera. At this time, he's not interested in going through it. In the meantime, we're talking to the DPW about getting the water, uh, line installed for this, for the project. Uh, there's a couple of changes that they have required. One is the change from PVC piping, which was in the approved plan, to ductile iron piping. The other change would be, is if we cannot get the easement, or the town could not get the easement over to Christopher Ren Road, that we would then have to loop the water back out to three A, to three A. So what I've depicted on the plan here is, is kind of rough form. The blue, the dark blue is the existing water line approved of the plan. I have these in sort of a smaller scale if you want a couple to look at it close up, or is that, would that help? Or is this good enough?
This is fine.
This is fine.
The red would be roughly the looping of the water line. The blue is, there's a common driveway as part of the project, so there's a common driveway and three houses sort of in the back of the property here. In yellow, I've highlighted an area which is an easement, which is on the record when everything was recorded and filed, which is an easement to the benefit of the town if and when there was ever a connection made through other people's property over to Christopher Ren Road, which runs over here. I guess the request is based on the significant extra cost of doing the ductile iron and the looping back through the subdivision across three A, whether or not we could eliminate the sidewalk fund payment. And that's really the crux of the meeting for us. I know Laura had been working on the logistics of that payment, and it hadn't been worked out as of recently. I'm not sure if things have changed or not. But all in all, the changes that the engineering department required are very significant. We understand that their, you know, that their guidelines have changed. We understand that trying to do it by the town. But maybe this is an opportunity for us to mitigate somewhat the extra cost that we've incurred before even starting.
More?
Well, it's pretty much exactly the way Mr. Tedeschi described it. This plan was approved back in two thousand eight. And I think there has been a change of water superintendents. But what they're asking for today is not unusual. It's, I think, fairly standard among most towns that previously they would sometimes allow PVC pipe for the main, you know, water main. And it just, you know, if you hit it in different ways with different types of equipment, it's just not as strong as ductile iron, which is, you know, not going to break under any circumstances at all. And I think that the town has put so much effort into upgrading its water supply and trying to deal with the brown water and get rid of the old pipe, that it's, you know, it's upgrading everything for the water system. This development was approved with some conditions that were a little bit unusual. And one of them was that there was a condition that if the developer was able to obtain an easement to get the pipe over to Christopher Ren, that, yeah, yeah, what did we say exactly? That the sidewalk would be...
Actually, the town would get the easement, and I think the town would supply the pipe.
The town would provide labor or materials or something.
It was convoluted.
It was convoluted, but...
It was convoluted, it was based on some kind of, something like on the back of an envelope that everybody thought was a great idea at the time. But it depended on a lot of variables that didn't end up happening. The original developer isn't developing it now. It's, you know, it's some, you know, new folks that have purchased it. And, let's see. Yeah, if the town got the, the town was supposed to get the easement. And, you know, the town isn't really, you know, the one to get the easement. It's not the town's development, it's, you know, the applicant's development. So, for whatever reason, it seemed like a good idea at the time. But then, you know, probably the very next day when you looked at it, you just sort of said, you know, what were we thinking? So that one, that one, I was recommending that that one just be eliminated altogether because it talks about a relationship between the town getting an easement and the looping. And looping is now absolutely required with every single subdivision, as is the ductile iron pipe, which isn't even mentioned. There's also mention in this, in this condition number sixteen that I think should be dropped, about the thirty-three thousand dollars for the sidewalks. But then that comes up again in number six. It just says that if the appropriate permissions are obtained from the town, the developer will deposit this thirty-three thousand dollars to a fund for sidewalks under three A. When I first started looking into this, it sounded like the Department of Revenue was very opposed to these types of arrangements between developers and towns where a developer would put money in a fund that the town could do something with later because they felt like it wasn't a gift. It was, you know, more like a, an exaction or, you know, one of these kind of bad things that you're not supposed to do. And they didn't want to allow towns to do that. They said the money could go into the general fund, but then, once it goes into the general fund, there really, there's really no control over it. And the only other thing that could be done is it could go into a stabilization fund. Like Town Meeting just created this economic development, economic, yep, stabilization fund in April. And you could also create a sidewalk stabilization fund. So, so I was trying to put some thoughts into some sequence of what would make sense for how to do this, if the planning board still wanted to pursue it. Because the idea of the sidewalk on three A, you'd have to get the state to buy into it. Although they're starting to look at some of these things. So, the first one would be that you'd have some meeting of the minds inside Town Hall to see if the town really wanted that sidewalk. And we would try to get some input from, from the state and from the town administrator also. Then if, if that, you know, you've kind of passed that one, you would, you would want to get that sidewalk stabilization fund. And then you'd want to get the thirty-three thousand dollars deposited in the fund. And as an alternative to that, you could also just ask the applicant to provide some materials or services valued at thirty-three thousand dollars. I mean, the DPW needs, you know, all kinds of, of materials. They're looking at a parking lot for the beach up in Minnetonka they're working on. I mean, there are a lot of projects that get stalled because of a lack of funds. Ideally, there should be a relationship between a project like that and this development. It shouldn't be something that's really disconnected. But, you know, there's some discretion there with the planning board on how they want to look at that. So that's basically what I came up with. But I think it needs some discussion from all of you.
And where was this sidewalk going?
Maybe up to First Parish.
It really, it really was...
Well, that's what I'm asking is, what was the plan?
It was part of an overall plan, I suspect, that needed to be added to by other...
Potentially, it was going to be like the bridge to nowhere, the sidewalk to nowhere?
Originally, it came back out, was the intent was that. We weren't sure that we could ever build a sidewalk on three A. But the concept of having a sidewalk, because at that time we were looking at all various alternatives for funding sidewalks and everything else. And it seemed to me intuitive to us that you just create this fund and you put in the money. And then when you need a sidewalk, you just go in there and you withdraw the money and you build a sidewalk. The logistics of that were a lot easier envisioned than they were in practice. So we, we've come back up and we created this, we created a source of funds for a non-existing fund.
For a non-existing stabilization fund.
Yeah, right.
And there's no other way to accept that money except to put it into the general fund.
Agreed. At that point in time, otherwise you create it and then you just languish with it.
Well, it seems to me that with respect to the subdivision, it ought to be tied into sort of the impact and mitigation to the subdivision.
I would agree.
As opposed to just some general fund.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, it really loses the point.
Yeah, it should be tied in somehow.
I think what they're suggesting is, I mean, it ends up if, if you measure your little blue lines and you figure them out what it would take, they're paying a significant more than, significantly more than thirty-three thousand dollars to sit there and put, to loop that water back in.
How much is the difference?
Sixty thousand. Yeah, the total is about sixty.
But the incremental difference?
The ductile iron is around thirty, and looping is around thirty.
How many units? I'm sorry, I can't really...
Eleven, I think.
Twelve units total. One existing house, including the existing house, it would be twelve.
And they don't, the water doesn't consider the second blue line? That's not necessarily a dead end?
It is, but I think it's short enough that it...
They don't really consider it to be a dead end?
And then obviously, it's going to come here, but it ties through.
That's so worse than somebody will set back from the road.
Keep in mind that back in two thousand eight, this was acceptable.
Right, no, no, I realize, I was just asking.
But it just, you know, I mean, I understand the looping.
So, how did it, how did it change? What was the process that changed it from what was approved on the plan versus what it is, what they're asking for now?
We changed the subdivision rules and regulations both to one require looping and the other was the pipe, the ductile pipe.
So, did they have to come back in and get approved?
Yeah, no, it really, I think it was also that the water supervisor, and they can do this, that the water departments across the state can actually trump planning boards. A planning board can approve something, but if the water department doesn't like it, they're not going to tie the water in to the town system. We did.
That was about the time we all came on board.
That was after they got their approval.
So, so basically...
Discussion on the relative merits of PCV versus ductile pipe.
We changed the rules on you, is what happened. Is that right?
I'm sorry.
I said, we changed the rules on you, is that what happened?
That's correct.
And as a result, you're now, you're now going to have to absorb an additional sixty K.
Yeah, they should have done it two years ago.
I mean, if you built it, it would have been PCV piping. Then you'd be asking for your thirty-three grand, or we'd figure a way to spend it.
I mean, you know, that's accurate.
I think, to be fair, I think all along, as soon as, well, first of all, those subdivision regs were updated in two thousand eleven. So I think the new language has been there since then. It's been a couple of years that they've been updated. And also, I think, I think we've been, we've been talking about this in all the conversations that we've had about it.
Some people can make the argument that an approved plan is an approved plan. And if it's been extended by the executive order of the governor during the recession, that a developer should go in and, you know, build the approved plan. I'm not saying run roughshod of people, but I understand what you said about the water department. But allowing the water department to just have their regulations and then say, I know this is the approved plan, but we're not going to abide by it because we want X or Y, is a dangerous situation. I would assume that the DPW was involved during the process of this plan being approved. And if you have new people and you have new regulations, that's fine. But I don't, frankly, I don't think it's fair. Now, we don't want to get into a fight with the DPW because we have to deal with them on issues and getting the thing done, and water time is. But, so, we're realists. We're realists. We're not happy about what happened. And then the whole sidewalk thing came up. And then, frankly, the whole easement thing came up, which the former, I guess, group was going to go and try to get an easement and all that. But then they said, well, we'll get it. And we're willing to be cooperative. But I think this might be an opportunity to say, hey, based on the circumstances, with the changing in the regulations and the cost contraband the developer, that the developer will loop the water, and the sidewalk fund payment will just appear.
I mean, I personally don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
Yeah, you've made a good case, I mean...
No problem here.
Yeah. I do have a question, just, I know I can't see that very well. Is there an existing sidewalk, or will there, not an existing, excuse me, is there a proposed sidewalk in the actual development itself?
Yeah, yeah, there is a sidewalk on one side.
Okay.
Yeah, and the common driveway does not have a sidewalk, but it's a narrower sort of driveway.
So, that sidewalk that then is, I'm assuming, I don't know whether it's on the blue or the red side?
I think it's on the blue side.
So does that, that's going to go out and just sort of end at three A? But there could be, like, where the bus, is the bus going to come up there? Or is that something like where the bus would stop on three A, or?
School bus?
Yeah, the school bus, I'm sorry.
You'd have to ask them.
That's a fair question. I don't know the answer, whether it would pull into the cul-de-sac or not.
Well, the only reason I ask that is I know some other developments where we approved recently, where there was not a sidewalk on the main road, what they did is they kind of ended the development sidewalk into like a little apron, you know, basically, that's a little like waiting area or something.
Yeah, we have some room.
I mean, this would turn maybe fifteen feet.
It's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a dead end there, you know, in the radius inside the property for about fifteen feet. But theoretically, at some point, someday, it might tie into a, you know, onto the state sidewalk. But that area could be extended a little bit if it...
Okay.
The question was, can you make it so that a bus could pull safely off the main highway and pick up kids? Is there another one?
I'm looking at it right now.
I don't know as much for the school bus to pull off as the place to aggregate the kids.
Kids to wait.
Yeah.
So you got a paved area that, and a bus stop.
Yeah, the actual sidewalk dead end is kind of on the state, not kind of, it's on the state.
At a weight.
You can see it ends there. That's probably fifteen feet, maybe from there to here.
I can't imagine you'd want to stop a school bus on three A anyway.
You'd have to come into the cul-de-sac.
I mean, this whole area is just designed to be grass. So there's a, there's a cer, I mean, there's a significant area of open space. And now it's part of the open space, but, I mean, it's, on the plan, it shows it's going to be grass anyways, but...
So can I ask another question here? I'm just reading the decision, and it says all water mains and impertinence shall be installed according to specification of VPW. At the time, did they specify PVC and all that? Or was that what was specified?
PCV was the acceptable way of doing it.
I'm guessing it was on the plan, but we did, I mean, not to beat a dead horse on this, but, and I can understand the feeling that it's, that it's not fair. And it used to always be that whatever the planning board did trumped everything. But this question went to Town Council. And Town Council supported the water department's right to get improvements that were not shown on the plan. So, that's, you know, that's why the whole town is, you know, in this, in this mode as opposed to the other mode.
I think this is the second case where we've, we've come back up and gone from PVC to ductile pipe.
Yeah, I know there've been, well, the Glen was another one.
The Glen was one, and it ended up Eddie McGough went up by, you know, San Francis.
Yeah. Yeah.
This was about twice as long as yours. But if we're in agreement...
I think we should, I think we should make the offset here.
Can I make one other just comment that they weren't a brief discussion or at least the opinion? In the, in this yellow area, which is an easement, has been created in cases, a tie-through to Christopher Ren Road. The permits in the plans call for the line to be brought to the property line. And I can understand that if it gets tied through. And maybe the DPW would prefer to have it there just in case down the road. On the other hand, I would strongly suggest stopping it in the, before you get to the open space area. Because I don't, not, I don't think it's a good thing for the abutists to have us go and clear the, you know, the trees.
Clear a path through there.
Right to the property line, to put the, to put that water line that may never get used.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think the idea, now should just be sitting out the easement.
We're okay either way, but at the minimum, I would stop here. And maybe, because now we've got to cut a path through here, but there was going to be the houses there, but I would definitely not cut the open space.
I think as long as the town gets, you know, gets an easement there, you know, like a legal easement, that there isn't any need to clear anything.
I think you put the easement in, you leave the easement. And then if the town wants to come back up, then they come back up and then they activate the easement and they put in the pipe.
So start at the end of the blue.
Start at the end, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Have you asked the DPW about it?
I haven't, I just, as I was coloring this up, I'm thinking, I'll put this in, I was going to go all blue here, I said, well, let's just go to yellow because, you know, maybe bring it to the property line.
Yeah, I don't think they would ask you to do that. They haven't asked anybody else to do that. If you're looping it, you're looping it.
It gives you a bigger dead end that's going to collect sediment and all that kind of stuff, too.
That's true.
You get no, if the water gets, if the water never gets looped through there, then you, you don't have any benefit at all by extending it.
You're just waiting for a homeowner to dig and put some trees in there.
Yeah.
We'll put a stone wall right down the middle.
Right on top of the pipe.
But anyway, so I think.
Maybe, I don't know if that's something that needs to be amended, or if it's something with the DPW, but that's.
Well, I think if you just take out that number 16, you just, all of that stuff goes away, and then I guess if you, with what the planning board does, wants to do, you would take out number six also.
Six, I don't, I don't remember.
Six was the one about the sidewalk, and then 16 was the one about the.
There's nothing else in six besides the sidewalk fund.
No.
Yeah, upon obtaining an appropriate permission from the town, the developer shall deposit $33,000 to a fund for sidewalks on Route 3A.
Okay, so six can go, and what about, what is the other one?
16. 16 was the real convoluted one.
The property line, yeah.
But 16 could be wiped out in its entirety?
I think so.
Yeah, because it also mentions the $33,000.
Yeah.
So why, why don't I have a motion to eliminate conditions six and 16?
So, do we have that?
Uh, no, but.
I thought we did, right? Isn't this, isn't this it right there?
Oh, no, that, that's the long one with all the, all the sidewalk stuff.
That's what we don't want to do.
The one with the fun stuff.
I've got a motion to basically eliminate conditions six and 16 from the special permit for dear comment.
Second.
Discussion? All those, oh, and any, we got to make sure that it's, it's not related any other place to eliminate six and 16 in any references.
Yeah.
Okay, then it's just six and 16 as the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just ask, is there a matter of process, or you put that in a letter?
You give us a 33, we return it to you.
I'm sorry?
You give us a 33, we give it back to you. No, I'm kidding.
Right now.
Well, let's, let's a small carrying charge.
We'll file an amended decision on the, on the subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll file a, a letter with the town clerk.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just now that the business is done, just curious, I mean, what's the timetable? When do you expect to start?
I think we're, we're very close. We've been working on little things, some, you know, piping, and I think we're about ready for a pre-construction meeting. We've got the, all the wetlands re-flagged.
Patrick told me that he was still waiting to hear from you about the wetlands.
Okay, I think, all right. I'll make sure that I've talked to, we, we were actually out there last week, and they finished the flagging, but I'll, I'll double back.
I think they may want to either have it reviewed, or maybe he goes out there and looks at it.
It, it looks like the ConCon has a separate meeting, so I don't know if, do we, should we try to get him involved in the, in the, in the planning board pre-construction meeting, do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I'll call him, and maybe I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, he seemed, I just talked to him yesterday, he seemed to think that, that he wasn't ready yet, that he needed to.
So there may be some other, I mean, there have to be, like, there's some other stuff that has to be done, like, siltation, hay bales, some other stuff before we, yep, should start going, but we're, we're close. You know, if we can be in there in a couple of weeks, that would be, that would be our goal in the next couple of weeks.
What are you going to do, phase it in?
Uh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna build it out completely, the road. One of the things is that there's a big septic system here, so really before any house gets in, the septic system has to be in, the, you know, so we're just, we're going to cut the whole thing and build the whole infrastructure.
The infrastructure, yeah.
I mean, we, we, at some point, we may want to go for some lock releases as it gets close, but, I mean, we're trying to complete maybe ninety percent of the work in ninety days if we can, or a hundred days. We'll see, but we have an SLT construction, other carvers doing the roadwork in their big outfit, and they're pretty much ready to go, so try to get it done in the, in the good weather, and we'll be on our way.
The other thing I just wanted to tell the board about was, we did have some discussion about the, the monitoring, engineering, and the team didn't have any problem with the, with the estimate, so unless, you know, there's any reason, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll figure it checked for you as well, so we'll, we'll patch it basically in the morning.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Go do it.
Okay. Anything else before we act on Bob's motion?
Oh, I do have one quick thing. I got the 4-1-1 on Fins. It's going, it's going to be a brew pub, operated by the same people that own the Tinker Sun.
I heard an upscale menu, too. Is that true?
Are they actually brewing there?
That I don't know. This was all second, I heard from Angelo, who was it, Riva, who heard from Riva, or who had from, like, the bartender.
You're giving up your sources.
Exactly, it's secondhand.
That's definitive.
But I gave him an agenda to go find out what was happening, so.
You know, there was a brew pub in San Diego when I was there one time, and I obviously didn't drink the beer, but they made great bread.
But I think, well, basically.
I could probably go in there, I could probably go in there a lot of times before I found out about the bread.
Well, based on some of the other establishments, I would think it would be more of an upscale menu.
That's what I heard, it was, it was upscale over there, the pub.
I think I agree, I would have.
I saw that today.
So that's, actually, it's good news that it's another, I think it's good news that it's another restaurant.
Yeah, me, too. Got a lot of dark space there in the evening, you know, it's nice to have something active.
I got an email, and then I'll send it out from Al Bangart, talking about the solar rate. And the latest calculation is between the turbine and the solar rate, they actually provide more than a hundred percent of the town's need for power.
So we're actually making money on it?
Well, you, you have the option of sell, because it's zero net metering, right, you can sell, you can sell back the power, but you got to sell it to somebody, I mean, municipality or something like that, but, anyway.
And along those lines, the news from Falmouth, they had a town meeting to vote to, to take down the turbines, and they didn't. Like, it was overwhelmingly that they, they voted to keep it, so I was kind of surprised with that.
Yeah, it was, too.
Particularly since the zoning board sort of declared it a nuisance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I thought it was just, it did have implications on some of the stuff that's going on here.
The number was like fourteen million dollars is what they needed to shut them down.
Yeah. I mean, it's, that whole process.
It's a big override.
Yeah, by that.
The whole process is kind of unique, the way they handle it, but, anyway. So Bob's got a motion to adjourn?
I do.
On the favor, aye?
Aye.